Right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, June 20th Committee of the Whole to order. First on the agenda, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Heffler. Commissioner Mazur. Absent Commissioner Morales is absent. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strouds.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Seven present.
And Commissioner Mazur and Commissioner Morales told me they'll be at the seven o'clock meeting that we're unable to attend the four o'clock. First, before we get to public comment, Administrator Catlin, I believe you have an introduction to me.
Yes, thank you Chair. Right now, I'll invite Director Grober up to the podium to introduce our new Sustainability Coordinator for the county and offer some insight on the program.
That one right. It's fun. I don't have my classes on. Hi, Rachel Grober, you guys know me. And give us a, you know, a few extra breaths here because this is Taylor Van Winkle's first day, so she's just starting. She comes to us from the city of East Lansing, planning and zoning, but has a master's in urban planning. I'll let her say that, masters, in case I get that wrong, and also is a graduate from Kalamazoo College. So I'll introduce Taylor for a second and just let her know. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, welcome. Welcome to the, okay anyways. I'm Taylor. My background is, I, you know, Kalamazoo College Biology Ecology Degree. And then I got my master's in urban and regional planning with an emphasis in climate change. And then I've been in climate resiliency planning. And I've worked with Van Buren County in the past and various other planning efforts. And in the last year, I've been working in the Planning Department of East Lansing. As an associate planner, doing a lot of different, different hats, learning a lot of different project management issue and things of that nature. So a lot of experience and a lot of different topics. So if there's anything else I can, I can illuminate, feel free to ask if there's anything else. I'm very excited to be here.
I'm very excited to have her here too.
Thank you very much. And Taylor is part of our new Sustainability Coordinator that we got grant funded for. So, great. Next on is public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Cunningham. I live in Schoolcraft. I'm here to speak about the potential YWCA grant of $100,000 for abortion and gender, quote, gender-affirming, end quote, care. The, quote, gender-affirming, unquote, industry which provides the surgeries and chemical castration used on children and teens is an industry like the abortion industry which profits from destroying the biological basis of human life. I'm bringing to your attention today the situation of young Kayla Love Dahl. At age 11, doctors wanted her to entertain, quote unquote, the notion of having surgery after online influencers gave her the idea she was transgender. Healthy breasts were cut off when she was 13. She had 75 minutes of evaluation with doctors who ignored her complex mental issues. Kayla is now 18 and is suing Kaiser Foundation Hospitals in California and four doctors for pushing, quote, ideological and profit-driven medical abuse. The lawsuit notes, quote, "There is no other area of medicine where doctors will surgically remove a perfectly healthy body part and intentionally induce a diseased state of pituitary gland malfunction based on the young adolescent patient's wishes." The term gender-affirming is considered dishonest and obscures the fact that DNA determines the fundamental reality of the sex of the human person. In speaking to fellow taxpayers, I have learned that they do not want to provide any more taxpayer dollars than they already have to pay for abortions and feminization/masculinization surgeries for minors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Administrator Catlin, will you advise us any prerecorded calls?
Yes Chair, we have one prerecorded call and Deena will play that in just a moment.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky. Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, June 20. As you continue with the 2024 budget process, I'm calling to strongly oppose giving any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. Almost all the services they provide or subsidize are against Christian values despite the fact that they claim to be a Christian organization. These include abortion, artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, and any doula care which supports those services. At today's meeting, I would like to make three points. First, life begins at conception. In embryological and biological textbooks used in most medical schools, eight criteria must be met to be considered biological life. An embryo meets all eight of those criteria. Abortion kills that living being through a violent death. If society gives permission to kill vulnerable preborn children, is it any wonder that people are being unintentionally conditioned to solve other problems through killing? The former uses scalpels and pills, the latter uses guns and bullets. Secondly, the YWCA wants money to provide artificial contraception to low-income people. I personally am against artificial contraception based on religious beliefs. However, for those people who think it's okay and want that service, it's already available through Kalamazoo County Health Department's Family Planning Program funded with Title X money. Description of the program is in the agenda packet for tonight's 7:00 PM meeting, item 2023-6214. Therefore, any money given to the YWCA for artificial contraception would be a duplication of services that are already available through the county. Third, people seeking gender-affirming care are not affirming their God-given birth gender. They're doing exactly the opposite. They're trying to change biological reality to conform to their mental and emotional identity. Recently, I read an article about a transgender man in the UK who gave birth. Physically, his top half was male, presumably through breast amputation and/or hormone treatments. Biologically, his bottom half was female. What kind of effect do you think his gender-affirming care had on that innocent baby in his womb? I do not want my tax dollars going to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. YWCA has plenty of funding sources other than Kalamazoo County to which they can turn. Thank you.
You Administrator Catlin, are there any hands raised?
It does not appear we have any hands raised here. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the MSU Extension Annual Report Presentation. Julie.
Thank you Chair Taylor. Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to present the 2022 Kalamazoo County MSU Extension Annual Report. My name is Julie Piyok. I'm a District Director for MSU Extension. In the district, I cover seven counties in our little corner of the world here, Kalamazoo being one of them. You should have received the report in your packets, and so I hope you were able to take a look at the report. I want to first of all, thank you for the longstanding partnership that we've had for many decades here in Kalamazoo County. The county's been incredibly supportive financially as well as with resources in space and support in other programs, including the Kalamazoo County Fair. So we really appreciate all that support. The less than $300,000 given annually to MSU Extension leverages the other state, local, federal funds that contribute to our services to fund our $93 million budget. So we really appreciate your part in letting us do our work here with county residents. Taking a look at the first page real quickly, in my message to you all, I mentioned that our staff have not only done great work this year, but they've also leveraged their abilities to bring in almost $1 million, actually more than $1 million in grant funding throughout the district. Several of those grants have directly been the benefits of Kalamazoo County residents through research and extension programs. If you take a look at the numbers, I mean, the large staff there in this building on the third floor, you're welcome to drop by anytime. We have quite a few folks who are housed up there and several of them are here today, and they'll introduce to you in just one short minute. Wanted you to look at the numbers of the 656 extension programs that included Kalamazoo County residents. I was going to print out a list of all of the programs. If you'd like to see that, I would gladly do it. It's about 10 pages of the way it prints. So I thought I won't waste the paper, but I certainly would be happy to email it to you if you'd like to see the breadth of the programs that residents are participating in. Some programs, you have large groups, 20, 30, 60 individuals from the county. Some you have one, two, three, because they're seeking an interest of a program that they see. For example, we do so many webinars now that meet the needs of folks when they're ready for them, such as the Cottage Food Law. When you've got an individual that's ready to take a product out of their home and into the world of farmers markets or other places where they can make some money, they need to know the rules regarding that, right? So we have those on-demand programs available to them as one example. The report itself is just a snapshot of a variety of programs, many of which aren't even, weren't even provided by folks that are locally based, but rather in the district or statewide that residents of Kalamazoo County have participated in. And I just chose some good stories to share with you. There are many more. I'm trying to be nimble and give you just a nice piece to read. I used to make these 20-page reports and that seems a little bit overkill. So just a little snapshot, you can get a taste and the flavor of the work that's happening in the county. And my notes went away because I'm getting a phone call. Yeah, so after, I'd like to introduce my staff real quickly, those that are in the, in the audience, you guys want to come up. Many folks couldn't come today. They had already had programming obligations. They're out and about doing their work. But these, these few individuals are here and I'll just have them introduce themselves to you, what they do, and then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them after that.
Hi, I'm Beth Clausen, and I am the Natural Resources Water Quality Extension Educator. I am, I am, I'm housed in Kalamazoo County, but I am also a statewide educator. And I currently am heading up the Michigan Master Naturalist Program, at which we do have a number of Kalamazoo residents that participate in that. And I also participate with the Conservation Stewards Program, which we're gearing up for one of those this fall. And I also host a summer webinar series, the Wild About Conservation webinar series. And last year, we had 20 Kalamazoo County residents participate. This year, it's double that. So it's really gaining popularity. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Corinne Lopez, and I'm with the Michigan Vaccine Project, and I am a health program instructor. And I also cover St. Joseph's Branch and Calhoun Counties. I do vaccine education programming.
My name is Jane Toll, and I'm a community nutrition instructor for Kalamazoo County. I'm funded through the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP Ed. And I do a lot of classes in K through 12 schools here in Kalamazoo, as well as some work with adult groups. And over the summer, I have a weekly booth at the Kalamazoo Farmers Market. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Veronica Balhais. I'm the Firth Program Coordinator here in Kalamazoo, working with youth from 5 to 19, and adults up to 26 with special needs. Partner with the fair to hold that. Would challenge you guys to come out to the fair. You guys have been a great partnership. The fair's been a great partnership, and so I would challenge you to come out. Our auction is on Friday. Pull your, pull your funds together. This is my challenge to you. Pull some funds, buy an animal, send it over to lobes and fishes so that it can help people in need. We have a lot of kids who really want to do that and want their animals to go there. We've been doing some mindfulness programs with kids at the Y, along with in schools. So we're teaching them about mindful eating and slowing down. We're talking about emotions and helping them to regulate their emotions and giving them those tools. And so, you know, with COVID, lots of kids have been going through some struggles with their mental health, and so we've been trying to help do that a lot. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Postettler. I am the Office Administrator here. I make sure that these wonderful people can get their job done. I'm behind the scenes. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Christine Charles. I'm the Field Crops Educator, and I cover regenerative agriculture as a topic. My office is based out of the Kellogg Biological Station. I cover Kalamazoo, Van Buren, and Berry directly. But statewide, I provide education on practices like cover crops, reduce tillage, and other soil health practices and work and research going on at the Kellogg Biological Station. So excited.
Good timing. We thought we had a delay here at 4:15, but she made it, right? One person who's not here is Sam Lawrence. He's our newest addition to the office. He's our other 4-H program coordinator concentrating in the urban environment. And he's, I think, teaching at the Y today, if I'm not mistaken. So he was unable to attend, so I would like him to drop by sometime so you can meet him. He's full of energy. We're so pleased to have him. And a reminder, that position is paid in part by Zoetis. They pay half of that position. So that's a nice local, private, private-public partnership we've got going with the local company. Any questions that I can answer for you today, or any of the staff, or any, anything you'd like to hear about?
Any questions from Commissioners?
Or I can sing a few songs. It sounded like I would do anything, didn't it?
Excuse me. Thank you Julie. I've heard your presentation for a lot of times, and I still don't understand the full breadth of everything you do. You know, some people are here locally in this office, others are kind of spread out a little bit. But you also mentioned that there are some educators that educate statewide. Is that true, or is that my misunderstanding?
That's right. Depending on their specialty, whether they go around, traveling around, like Beth, for example, she's mentioned that she's a natural resource educator focusing her work wherever her, her work is needed. So she would go to another community or hold programs other places. That's right. So, and that's the leveraging piece, John. It's, we, Kalamazoo contributes to housing some of those folks here. Van Buren houses many of our ag educators, our, our consumer horticulture person there, and he focuses much as he'd work in Kalamazoo. So we all just, it's a, it's a unique network, right? And everyone has a niche, and some people do more statewide work than others. And some years, people do more statewide work than others. And so, yeah, it's, it's not a very easy elevator speech.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that helped.
Thank you Chair.
Contribute to your comment at all, but.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for everything that you do for Kalamazoo County. I know as a new commissioner, about 20-some years ago, I attended one of your classes, and I thought it was very informative. So I appreciate it.
And you still remember that. So see, it must have made a difference.
Still remember it.
Yeah, yeah. So if anyone needs any more information, I know many of you are new, and I know some of you attended new commissioner training, so you did get the debrief at that point in time. But I would always welcome the opportunity to discuss our programming with you, get you out and about to see programs. You should be receiving our newsletter. It comes out, Nancy completes a newsletter every month, so you should be getting that about the first. I also am sending out a newsletter, so I hope that you're receiving that as well. So, thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity and your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, Kalamazoo Defender Presentation by Josh Hofer. Josh?
Thank you very much for having us here. We are at our four-year anniversary, and we wanted to come and share our progress. We've been doing some amazing things over at the Defender. I brought with me our Chief Defender, Adjourney Donna Innis, and our Village Operations Director, Melody Woods. We have been, as I said, operating the Public Defender Office here since 2019. And we are now operating a fully functioning village which services our clients' extra needs, their subsidiary concerns outside of their legal cases. We are one of the biggest public defender offices in Michigan, and I'm not sure how to advance my slides here. Right? Just to ask you. All right. So we, we approached the county for this contract back in 2018 initially. Our goal was to raise the profile of our clients, their dignity. Our vision is to help bring about a community that prioritizes love, compassion, and equity over judgment, shame, and division. And part of that process is bringing our clients as an entire human being to the courts, to the community, and treating them holistically. to the courts, to the community and treating them holistically. And the first step in that process was creating a law firm that defended our clients that was second to none in Michigan. And to talk a little bit about what we did and how we did that and what we're doing, again, Attorney Donna Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Hilgar. Well, I've been here in Kalamazoo since 1989 and I've seen a variety of approaches, if you will, to the support of indigent defense. And when the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission came to fruition and decided to actually put some funding into indigent defense, obviously we were all very excited in the defense community. And when we promulgated Kalamazoo County Defender Incorporated and started taking all of the cases in July of 2019, my excitement was beyond bounds. We have been off to quite a start. We did have the pandemic that obviously ground us to a halt. We were some of the only individuals in the county building doing arraignments throughout that pandemic. Arraignments were one of the things that the Indigent Defense Commission felt were very important. And when they decided to begin this experiment, if you will, in the state of Michigan, which was begun by Governor Snyder, they looked at arraignments and they saw that they needed to have lawyers there for individuals who were being arraigned. That's your first appearance in court when you're being told of what the charge is and most importantly, when bond might be set. It's also the time in a conduit for an appointment of an attorney. And so, in the past, there were not attorneys present to talk with, with clients at that time. So this has been a great service that's been put in place for the citizens of Kalamazoo County and then across really the state of Michigan. As you can see from some of the slides, we've done over 5,000 cases a year, which was far beyond what we initially thought would be done. Today, uh, there are 273 events that are being attended by Kalamazoo Defender attorneys. And that's with two judges not even there. So it's a very busy situation. And of course, all of us in the court system found ourselves with a backlog after the pandemic. We knew things would improve when we had MIDC and more funding. We're a nonprofit, as you are aware, so we also have funding on that side. We also knew that with MIDC setting standards for education and for compliance, that things would improve. Because the vast majority of cases that are charged criminally in the United States are represented by public defenders. And there have been volumes written about why this is so. The criminal charges are largely driven by lack of resources for individuals. We see mental health issues. We see substance use issues. We also see the trauma that is attached to individuals being in jail, even for a very short period of time. We know that 60% of individuals in the United States are living paycheck to paycheck. If you're in jail just for a few hours, you could lose a job. You could then lose a house. You could lose your family. You could lose a car. Everything is at stake. And if you're an individual who has in the past suffered from substance use or an exacerbation of mental health systems, this may be a time when you pivot back into that. So in establishing the Kalamazoo Defender, pardon me, we looked at how much was lost and what could we do to try to assist this? How could we meet these needs of individuals? So we asked the community, how can we stop this revolving door? It's very expensive to incarcerate people, both financially and the loss of human capital. And every single person with a very few exceptions that is sent either to jail or prison will return to the community from which they were sent. So we need to be able to educate our community about that. We need to be able to assist individuals in that journey back. We see a need to educate judges and the community to the humanity of our clients. Because it's not just enough to address the legal peril that our clients face. Because they, that legal peril is really just the canary in the coal mine of the other things that they are facing. Over the last probably 10 to 15 years, what we've seen in many studies is the effects of trauma on individuals, the effects of intergenerational trauma and how people react in a human nature when they've been traumatized. So how do we look at that? We've learned a lot about this. And what we decided to do at Kalamazoo Defender was to begin, and this was part of the onset also, to treat that holistic individual, the entire human. We simply must look at trauma and also everything that goes along with that. And to discuss more about trauma and the needs of our clients and our village, I'm going to turn it over to Melody Wood, our village operations director.
Thank you, Donna. In 2020, we received a grant from the Stryker Foundation, I'm sorry, from the Gilmar Foundation to expand to the second floor from the third floor at Kalamazoo Defender. We were able to hire two social workers and really go out and start engaging the community in this work that we were coming up on. And as Josh said, we went through a pandemic and everything shut down and we continued to work together to collaboratively, collaboratively grow what is now known as the village. We've, together, we've created a safe space where clients can come and they not only meet with their attorneys, but they have social workers behind them and different community organizations that we partner with in the community. And they're able to work on plans and goals for plans and goals that they need to address because it's what brought them to us in the first place. Last year, we received a grant from Stryker that has allowed us to take up occupancy of the second half of the second floor. And now we have six social workers. We have four support staff and we have over 15 organizations that join us on every day-to-day basis that's able to come alongside and help create these plans. We initiate at the beginning, we try to get involved as soon as possible. We initiate a holistic assessment that identifies the supports that's needed. We don't push upon any client thinking what they need. We really seek out to find out what their true barriers are and why they ended up in front of us in the first place. After we identify those supports, we're able to create a plan that connects them directly to the service providers, either located on our floor or out in the community. Our staff can then work to, through those plans and through those assessments and gathering all the information to help support the attorney so they can uplift them in court as humanely as possible. I think we've skipped past a little fast because I was talking a lot, the list of providers that we have on our floor and in our community and it's growing every day as our clients continue to tell us exactly what they need. By building these ongoing relationships with these community partners, it ensures better service to our clients and it also helps to continue to guide our mission. In addition to our partners, our client navigators are able to help lift the client's stories up to the court by providing their attorneys with mitigation reports that highlight the life events that shaped them. It demonstrates their accounts for how they came to be where they are today and it gives them options for the future. And we're seeing evidence of this working right now with less failures to appear, shorter sentences and an increase in dismissals. So we know this works. The next slide, please. Can I get one more? I went a little fast. So our client navigators are also able to support an individual that's incarcerated. They provide moral support. They provide coping mechanisms, so they're able to regulate their emotions. This leads to better behavior. In jail, they're also able to, while they're incarcerated, come up with a release plan. So they know exactly what they need to do when they get out. And this also helps to lead to, it reduces the chances of recidivism. You can go ahead. We help clients by navigating them through the court required classes and scheduling evaluations. This often helps lead to less probation violations because we can continue to walk alongside of them and help them fill out the necessary paperwork, especially when education seems to be a barrier. You can advance, please. This also, we can help with admissions to treatment programs, mental health facilities, unemployment services and more. And you can advance again. And as I mentioned before, we're really seeing this work. We're seeing a decrease in failures to appear. It's no coincidence, our client navigators, they spend a lot of their time texting clients, reminding them of phone calls, going to court, so they have someone to stand next to them and building trust and accountability. As we continue to listen and learn from our clients in the community in which we live, we continue to dive deeper and forge relationships with institutions that have been in our community for a long time. These are institutions like ISK and KVCC Disability Network. And equally, we're able to come alongside of some of the new organizations in town, like Helping Hands and Kalamazoo Housing Advocates and really get beside the boots-on-the-ground agencies like Participatory Defense and Hope Through Navigation. Together, we're working towards helping to build a more resilient community while living wholeheartedly into our mission. And on that note, I'm going to pass it back to Josh.
It really is impressive. We encourage any one of you who wants to come and visit our office space, please do so. We are really changing the face of indigent defense. What we've built up in the village provides support systems that really are unparalleled here in the state, certainly prior to the advent of Kalamazoo Defender. And we just keep growing. We're very grateful for the county partnership. This has been, you know, such an easy government to work with. You guys are, your support has been enormously heartening as we have been building through difficult times. And we really have enjoyed working with Kevin too. It's made it very easy for, for us to work with MIDC. And look out, we have lots of exciting plans coming. We're expanding our community ties and we're looking toward relationships with Western Michigan University and the med school to dig into the relationship of mental health and our clients' criminal justice experience and, and a huge communication effort to get what we find out to the public. So look forward to that. And if you have any questions for any of us, please fire away.
Questions from commissioners?
I just have a quick one. It sounds like just wonderful work that you, that you guys are doing. Have there been any sort of baseline recidivism tables that were done maybe in 2019, 2020 that we can maybe in a few years look at and compare our recidivism rates to other communities?
And so we, we track, the, the answer is yes, we will be able to do that because we track all of our clients and their individual cases. So if they come back, we know it, we can tie them to each other. We don't have enough data right now to say a great deal, but we will. And also, in good foresight, we included the data we're keeping on their services and their needs assessment that we perform when they come into the village to receive services in a database that's connected to the criminal database. Now, our partners can't see any of their criminal cases, but it does permit us to run reports and, and be able to draw conclusions about, about their circumstances, their collateral issues, how they might relate to their criminal justice experiences over time. And that's where we're looking to work with WMU's Evaluation Center. And again, within the mental health angle, the, the med school to help us identify the best ways to kind of parse our data.
Well, thank you again and keep up the, keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next on the agenda, housing resources was moved, correct? Come, all right, we have a review of accounts payable and payroll disbursements.
All right, thank you, Chair. Tonight, the board is reviewing an accounts payable claims list totaling $3,557.91. Of this total, the board commissioners asked to approve a claims list totaling $2,854,263. And then we have payroll dispersment totaling $2,416,566.08 for the June 9th and June 15th payrolls.
Any questions from commissioners? All right, see none. We are, get my, find my right spot and order here. Okay, we are on business priorities, budget, financial policy review, dispersment policy. Kevin, did you want to take this or do you want me to?
Yes, I can take it, Chair, no problem. So tonight, the, on the committee of the whole, we have a dispersance policy that needs some updating. And one of the areas that we know that needs updating and some of the board commissioners, some of the commissioners have shared some thoughts on, we're compensating our advisory board members more timely. And so we're adding per diem payments to the dispersance policy to do just that, so that we can process those on a monthly basis instead of a quarterly basis. We also noticed that the, the funds, given that the charter of accounts, the state charter of accounts have changed over, we wanted to update those numbers in there as well, just on the committee of the whole for discussion that we can add it to the July 5th agenda for approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Shrebs?
Not a question, but I just want to thank administration and staff for being so responsive. You know, not all of our advisory board members claim the per diems, but those that do really appreciate that financial support and the county being mindful adjusting policy so they can get access to those. That is DEI in action, so thank you for that so much.
Just a quick question, and I know we talked about it at a leadership meeting, but the Fund 620, DTRF Fund, did we assume that MCL 211.87, this is probably a corporate counsel question, the authority of that fund, I was under the understanding, what's that? Kevin, I had a chance to look at that. I, there's some discrepancy on the authority of that, that fund as well as, there was one, I believe, in the clerk's office, the, gosh, I can't think of the name. There's another fund that's outside of our authority as well, but I would dispute the DTRF for the 620, but just in future.
Other questions from commissioners?
All right, next we have the, by under finance again, we've got the expenditures and up until May 31st of this year, all of our expenditures and revenue, I would preface by saying that on the revenue side, obviously you'll see that we're only 10%. That's because most of our tax collections and most of those things come in in June. But you can look at departmental revenue specifically and we seem to be a touch higher than on a couple of those. And then what really, I was glad to see and thank you, Ryan and Terrell and everybody for putting this together because on the expenditures side, I think it's very worthwhile to take a hard look at that. The transfers in and transfers out are mostly the justice facility. But what we see, especially on the personnel side, five out of 12 months, we should be somewhere around 42 and 2/3% of our, our expenditures. And a lot of those, especially the large ones, are under that, especially on the personnel side. So we can, I mean, I'd like to get a month or two more just to see a trend, but I think we can anticipate our, a lot of our expenses being slightly under what was forecast. So that's a good thing. Not all of them, I think we might have a little bit of trouble with utilities cost as it creeps up. But for the most part, we are looking fairly healthy with our expenditure side. Are there any questions, commissioners? I know you just got this on Friday and trying to adjust, digest a lot of numbers, but I will say, if you get a chance to go over that, especially on the expenditure side, it's worth, definitely worth the read as we get into our 2024 budget negotiations. Commissioner Gessner?
Thank you, Chair. How much of the underage exists because of open places that we are not fully staffed yet as a county organization? as a county organization? Or am I mistaken?
That would probably be a better question for Kevin than me. But I can, I, I know that there are some unfilled positions or some, a position comes vacant. You know, it takes a while to fill that. And that's, I, I would anticipate that is a huge portion of the unspent personnel dollars. But Kevin, if you want to better answer that.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Commissioner Gessler, yes, I mean, a, a pretty significant portion is attributed to the fact that, you know, those positions have gone unfilled. And so there will be likely some projections that we can run on that to, you know, kind of figure out the cost. I don't have that pretty tonight, but a significant portion would be due to the fact that we have positions and that they just go unfilled for, you know, portion of the year, three months, six months, and so on and so forth.
One more question, Chair. Excuse me, Kevin, if that, I don't want to cause you to do all kinds of things and heavy duty analysis and whatever, but is the vacancy rate comparable to what we've experienced over the last, I don't know, five or six years? And hopefully, we'll begin to see the results of the wage and salary study begin to reduce that number? Or am I, you know, off base?
No, to, to respond to your question, Commissioner Gessler, that is something that our human resource department actually does track. So we can provide that information to the board in due time, absolutely. And then we can kind of, you know, obviously try to understand what kind of an impact the Siegel study has had on, on that, that area. And we can get back to the board on that.
I don't feel any sense of urgency. Just make sure we pay attention to that sort of thing down the line, because in an organization the size of this one, there's always going to, always going to be a certain number of openings just as a regular course of doing business. And I'd like to know if we're kind of where we were before, or I, hopefully it's not worse. But, you know, maybe it's actually being reduced. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gessler. I actually thought, you know, wouldn't it be a great idea to only, you know, budget 90% of your expend, ex- expected personnel costs, because knowing you'd have that attrition rate. But apparently governmental accountability standards don't like doing that, but, but yeah, I, I do hear you 100%. I think if you were able to forecast that into the future, you could much more accurately predict expenditures. And then conversely, on that salary pool side, overtime eats into that as well. So whereas attrition, job attrition, when you gain money, you know, overtime costs is where you, you would eat on the other side of that.
Any other questions from commissioners on this?
Again, thank you, Ryan and others. This, I think, helping is going to help us quite a bit as we get into the 2024 budget process, so we can identify trends. Okay. Next up, meant business priorities, mental health substance abuse, opioid settlement update. Lindy?
Good evening. I want to give an update today regarding where we are with our opioid settlement funding. Some of the information I might be referencing is within the packet. As far as the settlements, no changes have been made there. There are still four settlements that we are expected to take place that have not occurred at this point in time. As far as the status of payment, good news is that we have received our one and only payment with the Meyer settlement for the $1.5 million. We are also anticipated to receive the distributor's payment number three. So we've received notification for that. That payment has not come in, but it's anticipated to come in by the end of July, early August for $168,531. So this now, at, by the end of July, once we receive that payment three, the total amount of, of payments that we've received is just a little over $3 million at this point. We are still waiting for the four pharmacies to know when, we, we still don't know when the release of that first payment will be. So we are still waiting notification for when to receive those first payments for those four. As I've mentioned previously, we, I've been meeting with an internal group of county employees that's with the sheriffs, the, excuse me, the health officer, the medical director, the prosecuting attorney, and the sheriff to discuss the internal and historic work being done within opioid remediation. From our last conversation, the board asked that I include a couple of commissioners in on those conversations. So Commissioner Hepler and Straps have been joining, not only in those internal conversations, but they've also been attending the Kalamazoo County Opioid Coalition, which their attendance in that particular meeting has been very much well-received and has only highlighted to our community partners how serious and and involved and invested our board of commissioners are. So thank you for attending and being involved there. I wanted to take a few minutes to highlight this evening, some internal needs that have been identified from the health department, the sheriff, and also the prosecuting attorney. But before I do that, before I get into those internal needs, I do want to provide one more highlight regarding where we are in the planning process. So like I said, the Commissioner Hepler and Straps have been attending alongside with myself at the Opioid Coalition meetings. We've had a meeting on May 4th, we had another meeting June 14th. There will be another meeting in August, August 15th. And that's just a group of our organizations in the community that have come together. They've been meeting, they originally formed in 2017. And within the packet, I kind of give a little bit more of a synopsis of what that group does, what really they've been focused on, and who are those institutional participants. I have to say, you know, I've only attended, you know, two meetings. I have the third in August, but that has to be one of the best organically developed community partnership meetings that I have ever attended in my career, both in the nonprofit and government sector. And so I think the work that our community partners are doing, the discussion that they have, the healthy back and forth that maybe exists, I think there's just a lot of really great work that's being done already regarding opioid remediation. And I think Kalamazoo County is very well pointed to be well-suited on, you know, once we get through the needs assessment, looking at how do we want to allocate the funding that's being received and creating that budget? And just knowing that we have a community partners that represent the whole spectrum already sitting at, at the table in healthy discussion and dialogue about how can we move forward, which is exciting to see. Alongside that is, we have a meeting with Open MSU, who are our technical advisors for the community needs assessment. We are taking the month of June and July to do that internal planning for that needs assessment, which is basically coming up and defining what the guiding questions will be, the sectors, and also the methods of assessment, as well as that dissemination plan of the actual community needs assessment to the community. Our anticipated timeline for that assessment to go out into the community will be August timeframe with results compiled in September and with the hope of a report to the commissioners by October. I've been told by the technical advisors that they believe that this is a very doable timeline. And so we may have an opportunity where it may be elevated or a lot sooner than we're, than what's outlined. But tentatively, that's what we're planning. Alongside with that is that we have been waiting for the Michigan Association of Counties MAC to release their templates for metrics and evaluation tools. Initially, they thought that would be released in May. The most recent update that I received last week that said that it would be sometime this summer. So that has been a little bit more delayed than what we initially thought. Circling back to some of the internal requests that I wanted to elevate this evening, I, I wanted to just communicate to you of what I know are going to be some requests there and be forthcoming that will be needed. So in here, you'll see that for the community stakeholder sessions for that needs assessment, there is an ask of $5,000 for conducting that assessment that would include costs such as survey development or dissemination, you know, printing, website updates, focus groups, meetings, space rental if that's needed, or incentives for participation. That would be something that would, if, you know, depending on how many sessions we have in the month of August, we anticipate, you know, that would be a healthy amount for us to use for that one time to conduct that needs assessment. Another request that's been elevated is coming from the health department. And so this is funding a 1.0 FTE position for the opioid health educator position. This would be an ongoing funding request for the position at HCS for the time that we have the opioid funding. This particular position would be focused on looking at some administrator support and oversight for the existing Kalamazoo County Opioid Coalition. So I mentioned earlier that that was just organically developed. And so this position would help actually take over some of those administrative responsibilities, which is right now being conducted primarily from ISK and also our medical director. So freeing up a little bit of their time to help organize that. And also that coalition has subcommittees that will meet, and so allowing that position to attend those subcommittee meetings as well. This position would also be, of course, responsible for outreach and education, much like our other health educator that we have that's primarily focused on STIs. This person would also be responsible for executing the plan implemented by the board of commissioners for the opioid settlement funding, which would be actually a huge relief for myself. I've been happy to assist and develop this plan and have been tasked by county administrator Catlin to work with the board of commissioners and our community partners to figure out, you know, what, what type of plan we need to bring forward and what, what we need to present to the board of commissioners. But truthfully, ongoing, this, the funding really needs to have a subject matter expert associated to it within the opioid remediation and prevention field. Many of the other counterparts that I've talked to that are facilitating similar roles with the funding right now, the eventual plan is to move some of this day-to-day administrative, especially if we're looking at granting out opportunities at some point in time to their respective health departments. And so I do believe that this funding, this opioid health educator position could help in a variety of ways, not only with the funding, but also with that outreach and education. Another ongoing request that's coming forward is from the sheriff's department. So this is a funding request for the nurse position to expand the medication-assisted treatment services that can be offered to the inmates within the county jail. Both of these, funding for these positions, again, are only including salary infringes. This is just to give you an idea of what that request would be. We would probably need to bring forward, you know, if there's going to be additional support that sometimes come along with funding requests, meaning internal communications or a computer for them to use, or maybe for the health educator mileage or a mobile stipend. But again, these are just at face value, the request for those two positions. And then the third item I want to bring up is the enhanced drug testing for 89,300. So this would be the, in our Office of Corrections, or Office of Community Corrections. So this would also be an ongoing funding request to provide assistance with the cost of drug testing and monitoring for individuals involved with OCC who are not able to cover the costs themselves. The last item that I want to bring up is a one-time request coming from the sheriff's department, and that's for a full-body scanner. And this scanner would be able to detect the presence of illegal substances within all the newly booked inmates within the county jail. The implementation of this equipment will lead to the reduction of illegal substances within the jail, thereby reducing overdoses and deaths within this population. This does include a five-year warranty and training, and the anticipated life cycle of the equipment is up to the five years. It is important to note that although the request is for 196,500, the sheriff's department would be able to apply for a grant through MMRMA, which would reimburse the county up to $50,000 if that scanner was installed in the jail. So that'd be 50,000 coming back to our pot of money with the settlement funding. If you'll have any specific questions regarding the either position or the item within the full body scanner within the jail, I'd probably want to bring up some of the, my colleagues to come forward to maybe extend upon that. But I guess at the moment, I'll pause and see if there's any questions regarding the funding request coming forward for these internal needs identified or anything else that I've covered within the report.
Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you Chair. Lindy, maybe I missed a number somewhere along the line, not necessarily tonight from you, but the opioid settlement, I've heard total numbers over, you know, maybe 12, 13 years total and that sort of thing, ranging from 12 to 20 million. And that's, I know it's going to be pinning down a little bit as we get closer to having other settlements reached and that sort of stuff. Do you have any, you know, eyeball kind of thing now? Is, is it going to be between 12 and 20?
So I can speak right now to the settlement agreements that we've received, which I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I can get that back out to the commissioners. I believe all the settlements that have been completed, that those are estimating to be about $12 million. There are, again, there's four settlements that are still outstanding. So those will be forthcoming. With your question in particular, that will be one thing that the board of commissioners will need to decide is, you know, what will be maybe that annual allocation that you want to set, was that annual budget that you want to set for the spending plan? Because as you can tell from, you know, what we've received, every settlement's going to be a little bit different. And we don't know, it's not guaranteed annually, we will receive a settlement payment. So there will need to be a little bit of a strategy there regarding annual implementation of a budget.
Thank you.
Question on the salaries. What kind of, well, what fringe rate were you using? It says it just says salary and fringe. What percentage?
I believe so both of those were developed by those respective department heads. I believe it's the current salary infringes that are being used. Again, that was just their estimate. I think if that's something that the board wants to move forward on, we would definitely need to include finance. And that may have already occurred, but I would want to make sure that if y'all are wanting to move forward with these, that when those position creations come forward of making sure that that dollar amount is absolutely correct and that finance has reviewed it as well as HR.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I know that the sheriff's department has, I'm not sure if it's FOP or everybody at the sheriff's department, there, there's a little bit of higher fringe rate there. But that, yeah, that, I know we're not paying our registered nurses in the jail right now, $100,000 a year. But that 32% fringe rate.
No, I mean, that, yeah, so that is salary infringes. And they did not, when they provided the information to me, they did not sparse out, you know, that percentage there.
I mean, at this point in time, I mean, we're still pretty early on. We still haven't determined whether or not interest can be utilized by the county or as a part of the administrative costs. I think there's a 13, each grand has a different percentage. I'm looking for corporate counsel, correct? Each grand has a certain different percentage of how much we can use. And we're still kind of trying to figure out what is our ability to use this and what's not. But moving forward, I mean, that the one that I would absolutely have no problem with would be the community opioid stakehold sessions for the $5,000. I think that gets you started. But I mean, what's the will of this board? Is it, is it the will of this board to start expending these funds now? Or is it, should we keep, continue to wait? Commissioner Straps?
Thank you Chair. Part of these group discussions, Vice Chair Protem and I also were able to talk with deputy administrator and internal stakeholders about the request before us. And I just want to elevate that we do know at least 12 million is coming in. It will be upwards of that to some extent. And $3 million of it is on hand, yeah. Some of these expenses being presented, we know, you know, even once the needs assessment- we know, you know, even once the needs assessment gets conducted, we do need them. There, we don't really need to wait for the data. There are people currently going through, you know, violent drug withdrawals in the jail. Funding that nurse position can assist making that treatment opportunity more robust for people suffering while incarcerated. The nurse educator position as well. As we get into the needs assessment and we all, just like we do with housing, start to look through grant applications and the really taking action on the needs assessment, we're going to need that position to help guide that process for us. So I definitely would encourage us to consider moving forward with those positions. They will work in close collaboration with the community and this broad coalition that we have in place. Those are top priorities for me and certainly, you know, the initial funding for the needs assessment is, you know, an easy ask. I have no opposition to any of the items presented, but those are the top priorities I see. I think we can take action quickly.
Thank you Chair. Yes, Commissioner Strabs and I have been in this along with many of our partners. And we also recognize the fact that some of these things will take time to put in place. And the needs are now, we're kind of hoping that we could move ahead, especially with the scanner for the jail, which will take time to get put in place and then train the deputies to operate the thing. And that would help possibly curtail drugs being smuggled into the jail and hurting people that are there. So I think we are kind of of the mind that we'd like to move ahead with a couple of these things and ask our council to consider getting these things out sooner than later. And we can review as the new data and stuff comes along and the other needs that will be, need to be met. Thank you.
Thanks. My concern, I guess, is one, what's the total cost going to be? These are kind of, you know, ballpark numbers. I do agree that we're going to need to spend some. And the one-time expenditures, I don't have any problem with because we know what those are going to cost. The positions, however, you know, those are going to be ongoing operational costs. I'm assuming that's going to be part of that, that overall operating budget. And having those numbers, you know, filed or finalized down and, you know, putting it through Siegel and figuring out where they meet on the classification scale, what it's going to cost, both internal costs and everything else. I certainly don't have a problem preparing all that information and then using this as a funding source to do that. It just seems that right now we were like ninety percent of the way there, unless I'm wrong. But, but correct me please.
No, I think that is, that makes complete sense. And if it's the will of the board, what I can do is move forward, go back to the health officer and also the sheriff and get that finalized budget. So we know is that the finalized number, have them work with HR and finance. And then we can bring that information back. I think the other three items, the stakeholder session, the enhanced drug testing with OCC and also the full-body scanner. I think we feel very confident regarding those three items and that those wouldn't have any budget changes, except for, of course, the fifty thousand coming back from, if that grant's received from MMRMA. But I'm happy to go back and work regarding the two positions and have a more finalized budget to present in front of y'all before we move forward with creating them.
Let me consult with my colleagues here. What do you guys think basically about putting a motion to all the definite costs? The five thousand, the eighty-nine-three and the one sixty-nine-five, we could do that today. And then the two positions, we can get those finalized numbers and put that in the July fifth meeting and we can do it at that point. Does that work for everybody? Okay, now we probably going to need a form of a motion at the seven o'clock to do that. But yeah, I think, I think the will of the board is prepared for that for now. Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you Chair. I'm probably the only person in the room that's going to ask for this clarification. But when you talk about a full-body scanner, that is a physical scanner to see what you got in your pockets and that sort of thing. Not what you may have ingested and is in your bloodstream. Is that correct?
I can speak to that. Good evening. Lowen Bishop, Jail Administrator, Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office. The full-body scanner is indeed an X-ray type machine. It'll, it'll detect any type of contraband that you've ingested or that you have placed within your body to allow us to locate it. As you may or may not know, by law, we are not obligated and we're not allowed to do a full strip search on a majority of the people that come in initially when they are transitioned from our pre-arranged or initial housing to our general population after a period of days. The law does allow for that, but what we recognize is that people are most susceptible to overdose or having an overdose event within the first couple of days of jail. So just to answer your specific question, yes, the full-body scanner would be an X-ray type machine that would detect anything internally or externally on your body.
Thank you. I suspected that was the case, but I wanted to, you know, clarify it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you Chair. So I have a question about, once we, the nurse comes in, is there a unit now where people are detoxing safely? Or are they detoxing from their jail cell with other inmates that may not be in their same position?
Sure. So answer your question about whether or not they're safely detoxing. We nationally, it's, it's been said that as late as two thousand nineteen, that sixty-three percent of people that are incarcerated suffer from substance use disorder. Right now, we recognize that only about twenty-five percent of our population have a substance use charge that is active. What that does not indicate is that there are several other people that are suffering from some type of substance use or opioid use disorder that either are not being charged currently with that crime or with that disorder. And they are not also telling us. So the only way right now that we can identify people that are suffering or that are going through withdrawals is one, if they identify themselves as having this disorder and let us know at intake that they're going to start suffering withdrawals. Or if they do not tell us and then they start going through the withdrawals, we observe those withdrawal symptoms that they're having. So we do have protocols that have been written and are in place that when somebody does suffer from some type of withdrawal symptom, we take them to our medical unit. We have very close eyes on them. We really try to hydrate. And then depending on which type of withdrawal, whether it be alcohol or substance, another illegal substance, we monitor and if need be, we, when they're hospitalized or we continue to monitor and maintain while they're in the facility.
Thank you very much. I think we've got directive and we can probably have those other two positions finalized by July first, more than like, fifth, more than likely. Thank you. All right. Next up, Treasurers Investment Report. Treasure Waiter.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present the investment reports. First thing I want to present though is my new chief deputy. This is Tyler White. I'm going to let him introduce himself and his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Board. My name is Tyler Ray White. I'm a CPA and I'm the new Chief Deputy Treasurer. Little background about me, I got my bachelor's in accounting from Saginaw Valley, got my master's in public administration just earlier this year from U of M Flint, got my CPA in two thousand eighteen. In my previous work, I worked with nonprofits for over five years further in consulting work that I've done. I'm a co-founder of the Michigan Drum Corps Scholarship Fund, was a performing member with Legends based right out here in Kalamazoo. And otherwise, glad to be here.
Really excited to have Tyler on the team. He hit the ground running, more hit the ground sprinting. And it's been fantastic to have him. In your packets, you should have the completed investment reports for March, April and May, bringing us to current. The June investment report will be completed by the second meeting in July and you'll have that in your packet for that second meeting. I want to thank Tyler for all of his hard work. I also want to thank Director Balkama for coming in and working with Tyler on the, understanding the initial setup of our investment system, which was done before my time, so that we could know how we needed to change it to make the process more efficient. So we could knock these out and get them to you and ensure that you had this reporting information in front of you every month up to date. I want to give a little bit of update on what our investment portfolio looks like right now. Spoilers, it looks pretty good. As of May thirty-first, our, our investment total, if you go by the par value, it's right around a hundred and eighty-nine million, seven hundred and two thousand dollars. We have a year-to-month equivalent interest rate of three point five six one percent, which gave us a month of May interest earnings of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's with an average daily balance of a hundred and ninety-five million. The investments, as you look at these reports, you're going to see that our investment amounts are drawing down. And if you're wondering why they're drawing down, I would point to across the street, the Justice Facility, which has accelerated its draws as well as the Road Commission Facility. We are paying out of our investments to fund those two projects. They're moving along swiftly, which is good to see. And we are recognizing significant income from those funds and have in the past. So, but excited to see those getting put to use. One thing I wanted to share with you is just a top-line number to take home is our total investment income for the year-to-date. Right now, our net investment income in our portfolio is three point one million dollars. It's three point one zero six, four two one point seven six, if you're interested in those last pennies. But yeah, three point one million dollars in total investment income in the first five months. Remember, because this only goes through May of the year. That is a little misleading. We had a lot of investments that matured. And again, because of the Justice Facility and the Road Commission project, those laddered funds that were invested to mature directly when they're needed, those maturing right before gave us more significant interest earnings because it's dropping into our accounts. The Federal Reserve has decided at their last meeting that they are going to pause their interest rate hikes. And so knowing that this was coming, we have been starting to move funds out of our pooled funds accounts or not, yeah, pooled funds, our money market style accounts and into longer duration. Haven't been moving that aggressively. I've been focused on the reporting. But now we're going to start moving that more aggressively into those longer-term accounts, those longer-term investment vehicles in order to capture some of this higher interest rate environment that we're in right now. That way, when the Fed starts decreasing the rate, the money market funds that begin following that rate down aren't caught in that trap of decreasing interest rates. So hoping to ride those out a little bit longer. Beyond that, that is the investment report for May thirty-first. And I will take any questions you have.
Questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Straps.
Thank you very much Chair and thank you Treasure and welcome to you Deputy Treasure. We're very happy to have you on board. Best of luck to you. So my initial question is, the assets that we have in our pooled investments, it's a substantial portion of the portfolio, forty-six, forty-nine percent, if I'm remembering correctly. What percentage are we going to be moving out of those sort of money market strategies into longer-term investments?
So the, the absolute percentage isn't defined. In my head, I'd like to keep about twenty-five percent of our portfolio in those money market funds. Largely that's so that you all can decide you want to do fun, like good things in the community. If you come to me and say, we want to spend, you know, a couple million dollars, I want to be able to have that money available for you tomorrow. And so having those pooled funds as a portion of our investment account leaves us there with that option. So if we think about having a two-hundred-million-dollar investment portfolio, having about fifty million dollars that is money market, liquid capital that we can draw on before we start getting our significant tax revenue later in the year. Because right now we're in a spend phase, right? We're waiting for tax bills to go out in July and then the winter taxes in December. So, you know, once those revenues start coming in, then we have a bit more play with cash flow coming in. But there's a chance that if we need to spend money on something between now and then, then I have to pull it out of a money market fund because I'd prefer not to break a CD or sell an asset before it has a chance to mature and maybe have some realized losses there. Don't want to realize losses, so I want to keep a portion of our investment portfolio liquid.
So we'll be keeping at least twenty-five percent liquid because that's recommended twenty to twenty-five percent at least, right? So, and the Fed's, you know, pause on interest rate is a pause, but still need to be mindful, as you're aware of, what's occurring with the inflationary rate. And if there are additional hikes, we overinvest now, we may be missing opportunities. Right? Okay, thank you.
My question is on pooled funds that we were just talking about. Are we, the month of May, four point one two three percent APR on our pooled funds right now?
That is correct.
How, is that normal for cash accounts? I mean, what are these pool funds? How liquid are they? They're just?
Pooled funds are an interesting thing that governmental organizations get to invest in. I think of it as a, as something that you can pull out because in the pooled funds, we have same-day liquidity. But it's not actually a money market fund. What a pooled fund is, like Michigan class, is it is a large number of governmental organizations. So counties, cities, municipalities, school districts, all sorts of governmental organizations investing together in a combined portfolio. That portfolio is spread across many different investment vehicles. Pooled funds are one of the classifications that we're able to invest in. And to understand them completely, they're one of the most complex because they encompass everything from straight treasury T-notes to federal agency securities. They encompass commercial paper out to two hundred and seventy days. They encompass foreign certificates and just many, many, many different things. So they, the manager of those pooled funds, Michigan Class, and then My Laugh is the other one that we're a part of. They're constantly seeking to allocate those funds to get the highest investment rate possible while maintaining a even valuation and a same-day liquidity. And so they have a couple of different priorities there. But yes, that's, that's pretty average for what we're seeing in pooled funds right now.
It just seems, you know, four point one percent. I mean, we saw our finance report earlier. All the revenue, on the revenue side, I said, don't, don't really pay much attention because we haven't collected our taxes. But if you looked under the interest and income, we're showing a one point one million and that didn't even include May. But that was a one point one million dollars over. We're, if this, you know, depending on what mark-to-market is, and I've always said it's an inversion of what interest rates are going to do. I don't really look at that as much as the actual interest income. But what, what, what we're looking at is a substantial underestimation of what our investments were going to be when we developed our two thousand twenty-three budget. So as we go into the two thousand twenty-four budget process or time, I, you know, I don't consider this ongoing revenue, but I am going to consider it a substantial amount of one-time revenue at the end of this fiscal year. So keep those, keep those numbers in mind. Chair, yes, Treasure.
I would be happy to take a look at those numbers and to take a look with you or with administration to, for our two thousand twenty-four budget. I would however caution that when we are for- I would, however, caution that when we are forecasting our investment income, because none of us are inside Chair Powell's head, that we act conservatively. I would much rather under promise and over deliver. And so keeping those lower typically means that we're able to complete our obligations.
I absolutely agree with you, but the point when we get to a mid-year portion, we're identifying the trend. It's certainly not in this county's business to stockpile money even at four, even at four percent. We're not going to earn what inflationary values are. So having money, even earning at four percent is not going to going to going to counteract what inflationary buying power is going to be ten years from now. Sure. So as as we're doing this, we've got to make sure as a but as a fiscal agency that we are we're spending spending appropriately and not budgeting either too aggressively or too conservatively either. Vice Chair Protem Hepple.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the update. We also should point out that July is only about two weeks away, so we will be sending out tax notices, I'm sure, by that point in time. I'm sure all the people are not going to like that, but this is what we run the county on and all the services that we are empower or need to provide to our citizens. So it's not that far away. And, you know, we are working on the budget currently, so we will be, you know, hoping to make sure that those funds are available to provide the services to our citizens and make sure everybody gets their paychecks and whatnot, which everybody likes. So I just, and as Commissioner Strep pointed out, they only paused, and I think they're meeting again in July or to reassess. And with inflation, as the chair has pointed out, we want to be cautious, but we are going to be, you know, wanting to spend every dime that the county has in the bank. There are projects ongoing that need to be funded and finished, as you pointed out, the little project across the street here and one out on Twenty Sixth Street. So and I'm thinking there'll be some additional ones that we'll be looking at in the near future. But thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Gessler and yeah, just Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize for coattailing on something that Tom said, that the tax bills will be going out soon. And a township that I sat in with in the last few days wanted to know, and I didn't have a good answer for him. Is it permissible for municipalities, counties, whatever, to absorb or to defray some of the costs of mailing the tax bills out by allowing other organizations to put little slips of paper promoting something in that same envelope? Is that something that's legal in the state and the county or?
I would have to defer to counsel for that. I I've never heard of anyone wanting to do that, so I have no idea.
Well, we don't know that anybody wants to do it yet. One group that would sure like to be able to defray some of the postage costs. Thank you.
I think I'm going to let that municipality to pay their own corporate counsel. Okay, thank you very much, Thomas. I don't see any other questions. Okay. Next, we have a few proclamations. The Summer Learning Day proclamation, the approval of resolution supporting Secretary of State's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four budget, Prop Two proposal, and Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated fifty year anniversary recognition proclamation. Do any commissioners have, first off, Commissioner Morales will go next, but first, what I'm envisioning, if some of these are time sensitive, if any commissioners, and they all seem relatively mundane unless commissioners have a issue with something, we can wait to the next meeting, but I'd like to move these at the seven o'clock if if at all possible. Unless commissioners have a something with one of these resolutions that they do not particularly like. Looking around, okay. No, I'm I don't, I don't have that kind of power. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but there's a word missing in or Delta Sigma Theta, it should be sorority incorporated, and then the date is wrong.
This would be the right time, I believe. What paragraph in the word?
So I'm talking on our agenda. It has it on there. I don't know if that matters, if we need to change it on the agenda. It's the wrong data and any other items.
I don't think we need to change the date, but the word on the proclamation, that's what concerns me. What paragraph is it?
So in the beginning where it says proclamation, recognizing Delta Sigma Theta, it should say sorority. Incorporated.
Okay. We can, we can have that fixed.
And then I'm just making sure the data here is right. Yeah, the data is is cool.
It's good. Okay, we'll have that fixed for the seventh. Anybody have a problem with that change? No, I don't think so. Okay, cool. Thank you for that. And next, we have closed session. Who has a motion for that? Wants to read it. Commissioner Wheeler, I promised I wouldn't make you read anything tonight.
That's okay. I moved that the board go into closed session as permitted by the Michigan Open Meetings Act as allowed by MCL one five point two six eight one H to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically the written legal opinion of outside legal counsel.
There's support. There is a motion and support. Clerk Cox, if you please take role.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heppler. Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strep.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Does the motion come out of closed session?
I will make the motion.
There's a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are out of closed session.
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes.
There's a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes. And support by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the meeting minutes pass. With that, we are adjourned. Those opposed, the meeting minutes pass. With that, we are adjourned.
All right, I'm going to call the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, June 20th, 2023, regular meeting to order. First on the item is invocation and reflection. Who's? I'll do it again. Yeah, I know, that's not good. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom tonight to make decisions in the best interests of all citizens of Kalamazoo County. We ask that you give us the love so we can hear one another, what we're saying, what we mean. We ask that you give us the wisdom so that we can know how to act in faith that will help all involved and not just ourselves. We ask in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gistler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
All right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners, June 20th, 2023, regular meeting to order. First on the item is invocation and reflection. Who's? I'll do it again. Yeah, I know, that's not good. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom tonight to make decisions in the best interests of all citizens of Kalamazoo County. We ask that you give us the love so we can hear one another, what we're saying, what we mean. We ask that you give us the wisdom so that we can know how to act in faith that will help all involved and not just ourselves. We ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Nine present.
All right, next we have a request for proclamation honoring Timothy Stevens for 25 years of service. Commissioner DeLu, sorry, Commissioner Gisler, are you ready to read that? Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you, Chair. Assistant proclamation honoring Timothy Stevens. Whereas Timothy Stevens has served the citizens of Kalamazoo County for 25 years as of June 15th, 2023. Whereas Timothy Stevens has faithfully served as the supervisor, court services, chief deputy clerk. Whereas the county of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees who have longevity under the umbrella of county government, since it's through longevity, the expertise in the employee's particular field is achieved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with gratitude the many years of dedication and service Timothy Stevens has imparted to the citizens of the county and offers its best wishes for many more years of mutual association.
That's your support? There's a motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you very much. Next up, Summer Day Learning Proclamation. Commissioner DeLu, are you prepared to make? All right. This is the proclamation for 2023 Summer Learning Day, Kalamazoo, Michigan. Whereas high-quality summer learning and enrichment opportunities will be more important than ever in 2023. And whereas across the country, summer programs are adapting and innovating to ensure children and their families can access quality summer learning opportunities and critical supports and services after the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas Summer Learning Day is a time to reflect on the importance of keeping youth learning safe, healthy every summer, ensuring they return to school in a full, I'm sorry, in the fall, ready to succeed in the year ahead. Whereas there is still a role for summer youth employment programs to engage older youth, whether virtual or in person, with the support of business and community leaders. Our youth can learn, gain real-world experience, contribute to their community and economy, and experience safer environments through summer jobs, internships, and/or volunteering opportunities. Whereas the largest-ever summer learning study conducted by the Iran Corporation found that it was clear that low-income students experienced more setbacks over the summer compared to their wealthier peers. And whereas the summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social, emotional growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send young people back to school ready to learn. Whereas a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth through summer programming. And whereas summer learning is a critical component of our collective effort to ensure all students graduate from high school, prepare for college, careers, and life. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners designates July 20th, 2023, as Summer Learning Day in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. That's your support? There's a motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
All right, next we have one of our proclamations from our committee of the whole. Commissioner Morales, you have a guest you'd like to invite to read. We'll have a guest read the proclamation, and then the motion will be made by Commissioner Morales immediately after.
Thank you, Chair.
Good afternoon. Okay, now you can hear me. My name is Tracy Morton, and I am the president of the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I am joined with Leona Coleman. She is one of our wonderful, outstanding charter members, and Beverly McCall, who is a member of our chapter. It is an honor for us to be here this evening. Whereas on June 23rd, 1973, the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was created by 14 visionary women, meaning this year marks the 50th anniversary of chartering the chapter. Whereas the creation of the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter in 1973 was intended to further the work of the sorority and provide an opportunity to continually renew their commitment to support and service the Kalamazoo County community. Whereas the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter has followed the national sorority's intention by structuring their service around economic development, educational development, international awareness, physical and mental health, and political awareness involvement within the community. Whereas service examples of the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority include the creation of the Women's Educational Coalition who support non-traditional African-American female students attending college, the creation of scholarships only accessible to Kalamazoo County graduating high school students, and the creation of the programming surrounding financial empowerment for the citizens of Kalamazoo County. Whereas the chapter is a lifetime member of the NAACP, the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter has consistently supported efforts to empower African-Americans through increased voter awareness, education, and mobilization. Through the years, members of the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter have become voting registrars, worked in, and contributed to successful campaigns of African-American women and men in the community. And whereas in 2020, the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter was recognized for exemplary programming in the political awareness and involvement. Whereas Kalamazoo County is elated by the continued outreach from the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the example they provide within our community and is excited for all this organization will achieve in the future. Proclaim that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 23rd, 2023, as Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Anniversary Day.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Morales, do you have a motion?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I move that the board add the proclamation recognizing the Kalamazoo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on its 50th anniversary to the agenda on June 20, 2023, regular meeting of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners.
There is a motion and support. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. And the proclamation with the prop to, well, first off, let's say thank you guys very much for 50 years of service. I remember Evo Zier back a long time ago was promoting your organization 20, 20-some years ago, so.
She's still active in the chapter.
Oh, wow. Well, tell her I said hello next time you talked to her. But the good that you've done in the community over the last five decades is just truly immeasurable. So thank you, and thank you current members, Montise and everyone else. But thank you so much for your service. Okay, and the prop to proclamation, that is not as time-sensitive, so that can go through our regular channels and be at the next commissioner meeting. Okay, communications. Commissioner Gisler, do you want to take us through our communications?
I'll start over. Thank you. Ottawa County Resolution honoring heroes of freedom. Ottawa County Resolution declaring itself a constitutional county. That's all I've got.
Is there any other communications from commissioners that want to be in the record? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the committee of the whole and the last regular board of commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Then we're on to approval of agenda. Chair will make a motion to approve the agenda as written. The motion is made by Commissioner Wheeler and supported by Vice Chair Protem Hepler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. That takes us into our consent agenda with approval of transfers and dispersments. Oh, gosh, public comment. Thank you very much. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Jeff. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Lemmer. I am at 151 North Crooked Lake Drive. I'm also representing 149 North Crooked Lake Drive, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. I represent my family at 149 and 151 North Crooked Lake Drive. I would like to express my protest to the Crooked Lake, Eagle Lakes Drain Resolutions. I understand that the flooding a few years ago caused many people to have significant damage to their homes and properties. However, based on historical data, the flooding, in the flooding report and in the presentation given to those members of the lakes, these levels of flooding were not new and in fact were observed and reported in the 1950s. While this is a long time ago, it's obvious looking at houses surrounding the lakes that the flooding was an issue as the older cottages were either built far back and high or have pumps in their basements. People chose to tear down those cottages and build their homes closer to the water with basements, with township approval, without consideration for the potential of the lakes to rise to levels that they have in the past. This is not true of everyone, and those who did not make this decision should not be held responsible for the money it will take to potentially prevent future flooding of those homes. In addition, while we, my family, never signed on to the legal lake level petition, it seems like those who did would never have signed if they knew what the cost would be. At the meeting that introduced the lake, the lake residents to the legal lake level petition, there was a presentation that led people to believe that the project would be around 1.7 million total. However, as you know, that cost has since more than quadrupled to 6.9 million. With the costs presented at this legal lake level petition meeting, each parcel would be expected to pay around $3,000, not including the FEMA grant. Now, even with a FEMA grant, each parcel is expected to pay $8,850. Furthermore, it was stated at the meeting proposing the legal lake level petition that the properties that benefit, quote, "properties that benefit," will be responsible for the remaining 65% not supplied by the township or county. As our properties do not benefit from this proposal, we ask to be left out of the assessment role. The homes at 149 and 151 North Crooked Lake Drive were not affected by the flooding and will not be affected by future flooding. When building or modifying homes on the property, we did our due diligence and chose to keep the homes away from and above the historically high lake levels. I have copies of the present, I have a copy of the presentation that was presented to the lake residents showing the previous flooding levels and showing the expected cost of 1.7 million. I can leave this with whoever, but that's all.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the Board of Commissioners?
I'm Deborah Duncan. I live at 1454 North Eagle Lake Drive, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. I'm here as a representative to the Eagle Lake, Texas Association Board. As stated, we did experience unprecedented and even above historic flooding. We far exceeded the flooding in 1950s. We were told that it was going to be significantly less than what it's now being told. In spite of this, the Eagle Lake Board and I support going forward with the project. We have no idea when the flooding could reoccur, and as of today, Eagle Lake is still more than four inches from their normal legal lake level. One hard summer of rain again could put many houses in danger. So we ask the board to please go ahead and approve the resolution to go forward with the long-term project for both Crooked and Eagle Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Seen none. Kevin, can you advise on any pre-recorded calls?
Yes, Chair, we have one pre-recorded call this evening, and Dina will play that shortly.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky, calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message at both the 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM meetings of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, June 20. As you continue with the 2024 budget process, I'm calling to strongly oppose giving any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. Almost all the services they provide or subsidize are against Christian values, despite the fact that they claim to be a Christian organization. These include abortion, artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, and any doula care which supports those services. At today's meeting, I would like to make three points. First, life begins at conception. In embryological and biological textbooks used in most medical schools, eight criteria must be met to be considered biological life. An embryo meets all eight of those criteria. Abortion kills that living being through a violent death. If society gives permission to kill vulnerable preborn children, is it any wonder that people are being unintentionally conditioned to solve other problems through killing? The former uses scalpels and pills, the latter uses guns and bullets. Secondly, the YWCA wants money to provide artificial contraception to low-income people. I personally am against artificial contraception based on religious beliefs. However, for those people who think it's okay and want that service, it's already available through Kalamazoo County Health Department's Family Planning Program funded with Title X money. Description of the program is in the agenda packet for tonight's 7:00 PM meeting, item 2023-6214. Therefore, any money given to the YWCA for artificial contraception would be a duplication of services that are already available through the county. Third, people seeking gender-affirming care are not affirming their God-given birth gender. They're doing exactly the opposite. They're trying to change biological reality to conform to their mental and emotional identity. Recently, I read an article about a transgender man in the UK who gave birth. Physically, his top half was male, presumably through breast amputation and/or hormone treatments. Biologically, his bottom half was female. What kind of effect do you think his gender-affirming care had on that innocent baby in his womb? I do not want my tax dollars going to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. YWCA has plenty of funding sources other than Kalamazoo County to which they can turn. Thank you.
Are there any hands raised?
Chair, it appears we have no hands raised at this time.
Is there somebody else in the audience that wishes to address the board? I'm sorry, I want to give everybody the Is there somebody else in the audience that wishes to address the Board? I'm sorry, I want to give everybody the opportunity. This is all, catch y'all.
So I'm Julie Olden. While I'm on Eagle Lake, parcel number 0909375020. And I am protesting the special assessment role for the following reasons. My property is on high ground, my home is not and never was at risk. It should be assessed at the same rate as other non-risk properties, which is $2,221.39. Properties that chose to build on low ground should be aware of the natural nature of lake levels to rise and fall and incorporate safety measures into their building plans. Choosing to build in a high-risk area should come with accepting potential higher costs when the worst happens and not expecting others to share equally in the cost. Properties involved in the short-term solution should also be involved in the long-term solution since they will also benefit from these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. So I got everybody, anybody else in the audience wishing to address the Board?
My name is Russell Walters. I live at 7414 Field Bay Avenue on Crooked Lake. I also happen to be the President of our association, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. I also have a house that's high, much higher than the ones that were threatened by the flooding. But my property was damaged by the flooding. I lost the patio, I lost trees. It's cost me out-of-pocket money and I don't want to have to spend that money again. So, yes, I understand that there's some people whose homes were threatened and I'm sad for that and maybe planning could have helped that. But even though I am one of those who happens to have a high property, I experienced a financial cost and therefore I am supporting the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Seen no other citizens wishing to address the Board. We can move on to transfers and dispersments and consent agenda. Who wants to do that? Who's ready? I always pick on Commissioner Wheeler, but I know she's got a long, you're out, okay, Commissioner Wheeler.
Okay, recommendation for approval of transfers and dispersments, 2023-6352, request for approval of accounts payable and payroll disbursements. Board of Commissioners, 2023-6087, request for approval to appoint Kelly Cody to the Veterans Affairs Committee. 2023-5976, request for approval to reappoint Tony Kennedy, Veterans Affairs Committee. 2023-6278, request for approval to appoint Sharda Chambers to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. 2023-6277, request for review and approval of Local Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Membership Recertification, Michigan Works. 2023-6279, request for review and approval of the Memorandums of Understanding under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Michigan Works. 2023-6280, request for review and approval of the Infrastructure Funding Agreements under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Michigan Works. 2023-6281, request for the review and approval of the Workforce Development Agreement between the County of Kalamazoo and the WEP John Institute for Employment Research, Michigan Works. 2023-6302, request for the review and approval of the My Reach Michigan Rural Enhanced Access to Careers in Healthcare, Michigan Works. 2023-6347, request for approval of Amendment Number 1 to the
I'm gonna, can we move that to non-consent because we have a amendment to do to that one? I apologize.
That's okay. So we'll skip that one. Circuit Court, 2023-6230, request for approval to renew Title 5, friend of the court, CRP Grant. Clerk, 2023-6301, request for approval of grant agreement with Kalamazoo County, Kalamazoo, excuse me, with the Kalamazoo County, Kalamazoo Community Foundation. District Court, 2023-6348, request for the approval of a District Court ARPA Funding Award Amendment under Finance, 2023-6227, request for approval of various budget adjustments, transfers, and position elimination and creations. 2023-6265, request for approval of position elimination and creation. 2023-6350, request for approval of a budget transfer to support an Assistant Corporation Council position. Under Health and Community Services, 2023-6195, request for approval of a position continuation. 2023-6214, request for acceptance of Amendment Number 1 of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Department Grant Award for the Family Planning Program and 2 for the health officer to electronically sign the contract on the county's behalf with EGRAMs. 2023-6219, request for 1, acceptance of Amendment Number 3 to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Comprehensive Agreement, Number 2023-0138 and 2 for the health officer/director to electronically sign the amendment on the county's behalf in EGRAMs. 2023-6234, request for acceptance of 1, MD HHS Emerging Threat Physical Year 23 Amendment Number 3 and 2, health officer to electronically sign amendment on county's behalf within EGRAMs. 2023-5780, request for approval and signature of a contract, WMU Center for Disability Services. 2023-6000, request for approval and signature of contract with Western Michigan University Homer Stryker MD School of Medicine as approved to form by Corporation Council. 2023-6260, approval, request for approval of a budget transfer for the senior millage to Area Agency on Aging Region 3A. 2023-6307, request for approval and signature of the Physical Year 23 County Veteran Service Fund Grant Amendment Application with the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency. Under Housing, 2023-6229, request for approval for the 2023 Additional Housing Recommendations on the Categories of Multifamily and Supportive Services. 2023-6236, request for approval and signature of the Grant Agreement with Fair Housing Center of Southwest Michigan. 2023-6308, request for approval and signature of the Grant Agreement with Valley Vision Construction and Development LLC. Under Planning, 2023-6250, approval or request for approval and signature of a contract with Whiteman and Associates. 2023-6255, request for approval and signature of a contract with Crane Land Surveying. 2023-6256, request for approval and signature of a contract with Southwest Survey and Engineering LLC. Under the Prosecuting Attorney, 2023-6216, request for position creation and elimination. And under the Sheriff, 2023-6225, request to accept supplemental MDOC funding for Physical Year 2023. And with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
There is a motion and support. Clerk Coxey, please take role.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strands.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Nine, yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business and general orders, a presentation by the Drain Commissioner of the Crooked and Eagle Lake Level Situation Assessment Roles and Capitation of Costs.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Pro Tem Commissioners. My name is Jason Weirzman, Drain Commissioner for Kalamazoo County. I'm not really doing a presentation tonight, but I am before you tonight with requests for the County Board of Commissioners to approve, number 1, resolution approving the computation of costs and assessment role for the Crooked and Eagle Lakes Lake Level Project. Number 2, resolution for the county to pledge full faith and credit to issue bonds for the projects to be repaid by special assessment. I also brought a few guests with me if you had any questions about anything with this project. We brought General Counsel Kyle Mara. We have Ronald Liskom, counsel from Miller Canfield, that would be for bonding. We have Tom Wheat, project engineer. Nick Loakes, Texas Township Supervisor. Eric Wilson, Texas Township Superintendent.
Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Strands.
Thank you so much. I know this has been an emotional and difficult process for the community affected by flooding and I just want to have some understanding. I know we have extensive costs that have to be borne to get the lakes to the legal level that's been said, as requested by majority of the community members, residents on the lakes. Um, my question goes to future water events. We're taking the action here on the funds that were potentially going to bond. What assurance do we have that this action is going to be sufficient to maintain these lake levels as we are, you know, expected locally and regionally to continue to face unprecedented weather events and water events in particular? Help me understand.
I'll bring up Tom Wheat, our engineer on the project.
Good evening. So we did as a part of the permit application with Eagle, extensive modeling of the system, which means the precipitation, the ground, the water, the groundwater, and the discharge rate out of the system, the pumping from Eagle Lake to Crooked Lake and then Crooked Lake downstream. And we've done those models and we are very confident and Eagle agrees with our numbers that we can handle these situations. Now, it's not going to be a situation where if we have a an event like we had before, a couple of years ago, the water's going to come up six inches, maybe a foot to get control of that, but it will come down, it's not intended to be set steady. As a matter of fact, Eagle likes to have some variation and that's why the, eventually the numbers, the pumping numbers were set the way they were. So there, the the other part of this was, is when we did the short-term project, the water got three and a half, four feet high before we were able to start pumping. In this case, the water's going to get four inches high before we start pumping. That will be a lot of rate, but it'll be over a longer period of time.
Anything else?
Commissioner DeLu. Just in layman's terms, why does this cost so much?
Inflation. I would, I mean, you're just, you're pumping, I mean.
There's actually two reasons and the, the two reasons are, is the, the original plan was to use gravity and lake bottom to filter out aquatic invasive species that ultimately Eagle said we couldn't do. So it had to go back to pumping and mechanical filters. So the piping system would have been the same, but we have two pump stations in a building with a mechanical filter. And we have seen, at least on the pumping stations and the building and equipment side of our estimates in the past have gone through the roof. They're 100% more than they, than what we expected. And we're seeing that, not only on this project, we're seeing that industry-wide. So, water and wastewater treatment facilities throughout the industry has just, it's way above what the, you know, what we've had 25% inflation over the past three years. It's, it's, it's well in excess of that. So it's a, it's a combination of supply chain contractors are busy. They don't have labor. They have a, and all the equipment has gone sky-high. So it's a combination of those things.
So on this initial cost, is that just for the infrastructure to begin with and then it's kind of, there's going to be more cost to maintain?
Yes, yes. And there is some money in the budget to operate the system and do some monitoring for a period of five years.
So will the cost be, continue to be paid over higher assessments from the, wait, after we expend that money, it's in reserves? Yep. That we projected, what, 10 years, maybe?
It depends.
It depends on the, and the rainfall events that we have.
And as, as an example as well, short-term project, we pumped for a year and a half, Russ, about a year and a half, so that as operations would be about the same. So it would, the five years that we have, that we have in the budget to be able to run the system could handle two, maybe three of those events.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me, and welcome. I have a couple of questions. So when I got appointed to this Board a couple of years ago, we were dealing with the flooding issues. And so at that time, I know that FEMA dollars hadn't been in effect. Now that they are, is this something that the community voted on? This is what they wanted, number one. Number two, I guess, how did the county inquire the costs? I mean, if you said it, I need to hear it again. Number three, are any other districts going to be affected by this cost where they will have to cough up, cough it up in taxes or anything else? And then this payment, is it one-time or are we always responsible?
Just a one-time payment.
Any other questions?
Number two, about the assessments.
Come up to the mic.
Sorry. Number two about the assessments. You pay on every drain that we do, we work on. You just never observed this kind of cost before. Usually at the end of the year, it's maybe $50,000, $60,000 amongst all the county drains that we, that we do, we maintain. So this is just something that happened in what, 2017 that started. I inherited this project and we just completed it. So we're just moving forward with it.
And then outside of, how does the county become aware of something like this so that we?
We sent a letter and we sent a letter.
To like?
The treasurer.
And I guess.
On your portionment, is that what your question is about your portionment?
So I guess for me, it wouldn't go to our administrator or our chair so we could have a discussion. Is that, is that?
It was already brought forward before the Board and you delegated the Drain Commissioner as a delegated authority to pursue this project, if that's what you're asking. And Pat Crowley did so. I got a couple of quick questions. How much do we usually pay on like every drain? Like if you added all the drain? 10 to 15% on average. We looked at all the lake levels and I determined 12%. So for the county. No, like the, all the drains, we roughly, the county roughly covers 10 to 15, 50, 10 to 15% of drain costs. Yes, Chair. Okay, I, that was, that's a good one to know. Okay. Commissioner DeLu.
Is your plan, is this like required by the state of Michigan? And kind of a second question is, what if we, not we, what if nothing was done? What would happen?
Commissioner, I'll help answer. So I'm Kyle Mara, General Counsel for the Drain Commissioner. So the, the statute at issue here is something called Part 307 of Michigan's Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. It says essentially, once a county initiates the process to set a lake level, which is what the County Board of Commissioners did in 2020, that the county has an absolute responsibility to maintain that lake level. So it is required by the state of Michigan to build some sort of infrastructure that would maintain the lake level. And then can you, can you remind me of your second question, please?
Well, you somewhat answered because I said, what if we do nothing?
Yeah, if you do nothing, you would be, if you, if you did nothing, you'd be in violation of a court order. Yeah, if you do nothing, you would be, if you if you did nothing, you'd be in violation of a court order, you'd be in violation of the state statute. And my advice would be to the drain commissioners you you bring forth. I I. You you can't do it. Essentially, you can't do nothing. Yeah, when you have one of these established.
And I guess my my last question, um, the original thing, and I just saw this on the. I talked about the road commission potentially having a percent funding and then the drain.
Not on like level, sir.
What's that?
Not on like levels.
Not on like levels, the thing that was passed around or.
Yeah, it and I'm not sure what the the item that is passed around says, but for lake levels specifically. The road commission cannot be assessed. That's just a function of the statute. It's a relatively interesting statute. The county could be assessed, township can be assessed, the DNR can be assessed, which many assessment statutes does not allow the DNR to assess, but. The DNR is being assessed in this in this proposal.
Okay, that says who pays the envisioned sad and how it works. So sad is not the lake levels.
Sad sad would be a reference to likely Special Assessment District. So how this process works and it's relatively unique. If anybody's familiar with special assessments, let's say a city or township village special assessment. Here, the court actually determines who can be assessed and who cannot be assessed. They determine the property so that so sad is is a short is short for Special Assessment District.
So the court has already deemed the appropriated those levels, the court has.
Court has, the court has ordered two things. These are the levels that need to be maintained on the lakes. And then the second thing that the court has ordered is these are the boundaries of the Special Assessment District. So when you do special assessments to maintain that lake level. These are the only properties that you can assess. And the other thing that I think should be known about the court hearing is. Every propose, every individual to be in the proposed Special Assessment District does receive individual mailing notice to the court hearing. And unlike many court hearings, they can testify and present evidence. In that in their court hearing as to whether they believe the lake level should be established. And then whether the boundaries of the Special Assessment District should be established. And the judge, this case Judge Lipsy had to look at a number of factors. In the statute to determine whether I'm going to create the lake level based on the evidence from the the drain commissioner and then two. What properties am I going to put in the Special Assessment District?
And did the judge put the county, any of the county's properties in that Special Assessment District, or is that just based on our practice?
That's it's based on, it's based on a practice as well as in a part three oh seven, I think it's MCL three two four three oh seven one one. It talks about how you can assess. Political subdivision. So in this case, you have the township being assessed, you have the county being assessed according in accordance with past practice and in ranges with with your lake levels. Any other questions from commissioners, Commissioner Straps?
Uh, thank you, just to the the court's determination of the Special Assessment District. Just to parse with the attorney, the Special Assessment District notes what properties can be attacked. Does it mean all of them must be within that district?
It does not. However, the the function of putting a property in a Special Assessment District is you have some benefit from the lake level. So you typically don't put properties in a Special Assessment District. That have no benefit and you typically don't assess properties that don't have benefits. So it doesn't say you must assess, but it the. The reasoning behind it is these are the properties that make sense to assess. And how we've essentially determined that it's it's generally properties that have some form of of lake access. So you benefit from the lake level because you have access to the lake somehow.
Then answer your question. Any other questions from commissioners? Looking around, I see none. Thank you guys very much. Okay, next we have Crooked and Eagle Lake Levels Approval. Of Resolutions Approving Assessment Roles, Costs and Project Funding. Anybody want to make this motion? Corporate counsel.
There we go. Sorry about that. Not us making the motion, but I just wanted to note that we will need an amendment to the motion. Provided writing there to separate out the two distinct resolutions that are being passed here to make sure it's clear.
And unfortunately, I doodled all over it. Commissioner Hepler, so you you are you looking for this motion now? Number one is an amendment to the motion. Please ignore all my doodles.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the board approve the following two versions. Related to the Crooked Lake Levels. Number one, the resolution pledging full and faith. And credit for the Crooked and Eagle Lakes Levels. Special Assessment District, Special Assessment Bond Series two zero twenty three. And when we do both of them at the same time. Okay, the second is a resolution to approve the. Compensation of the project costs and special assessment roles for the lake level project Crooked and Eagle Lakes.
Do you want us to read the whole motion and make that as a mention? You you sure may. Okay, well, I guess I will speak briefly on on this motion. Apparently, there was an an appeal process to for us for that six hundred and forty thousand dollars assessment. It was sent to our treasurer who did not inform our administrator or myself or our clerk about the the meeting. So. We were not made aware of this. I have sort of a philosophical. Sort of feeling on this. I don't do not believe that it should be the duty of people in the more impoverished. Portions of the county to subsidize assessments that are going to benefit, you know, million dollar properties. It's a twelve percent assessment that the county is responsible for, a ten percent assessment that the township is responsible for. The county did not issue any building permits on Eagle Lake whatsoever. The county is not over the period of twenty or thirty years. Been allowing people to build on a flood plain. We do have a history according to our drain commissioner and I'm. Almost respect for that we do pay a traditional ten fifteen percent on all drains. I don't believe that a lake level assessment, I do believe that we are court ordered to remediate this and. Usually through the state law is you create a Special Assessment District and you pay for it. I don't believe in the subsidization subsidizing those Special Assessment Districts. Now, we have people that are upset that it's costing as much as it is now. Mostly through restrictions from Eagle. That gravity cannot be used, it's got to use mechanical filters. The price went up from one point seven to six seven million dollars. The county did provide one point six million dollar or. Applied for and got a one point six million dollar FEMA grant to help offset a lot of these costs. I believe that that should be our county's role and responsibility. I have a hard time. Saying that the county should be assessed six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That is my personal opinion. I expect that I am probably the lone opposition in this endeavor. But I just wanted that opinion to be made out there so that people heard that. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So. With that, because I asked the question if any other communities will be affected and I was just told no. And then you just mentioned that some impoverished communities.
Well, that was a neat stretching it a bit, I'll be honest with that.
All right, so strike it. However, Jesus John, you made me forget. Oh, however. When we look at this, because we miss. The date that we can appeal, do we not? Because he just said that we actually have no choice. So since we missed that appeal date. Do we have, we absolutely have to pass this or will be fined by? According to the MCL.
I do not know that. Our only option would be to say that we were not.
He's right there, let's.
Yeah, I I know he's going to, we we're going to have completely different opinions, but I.
I need our council's opinion.
First, we can, we can hear from our drain commissioner and then I'll.
Just wanted to clarify some, it wasn't the county that got the FEMA grant, it was the township. The township applied for that grant.
And the township also, the township also paid to get, I I believe there's some certification process, some study that they need to do. So the township incurred. Costs to obtain the FEMA grant in one point seven billion dollars. So I think that was, I think that's important to know and it's my understanding. That the county did not have some sort of. But plan or or some sort of requirement to apply for that for that grant.
So there was no ARPA dollars from the county that went towards this project?
No, no.
Okay, I was.
Something else, every, we have Austin, Long West, Limekill, those all have legal lake levels and you do get assessed for those. The county does pay any work I do on those lakes. If I have to repair Austin Lake Dam, if I have to rebuild that and it's a million dollars, you will get assessed. Twelve percent of that as well.
Property owners.
Property owners.
Correct.
And and the and the county will pay.
And okay.
The county will pay their part. That's on every drain.
And I guess my my answer to your question would be. That would be a question for our corporate counsel whether or not our we were properly notified and that would be the deal.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Morales, I believe legally we would notice would constitute proper notice. However, the notice went to the office of the treasurer solely. And no notice was provided then to the administrator or passed on to corporation counsel, which would have allowed me to preserve the county's rights to appeal and attend that hearing. I did not receive it. Today was the first day I got the notice regarding the May seventeenth, twenty twenty three hearing.
So my question is. Do is this an absolute yes that we have to pass this or are we going to be fined because we missed the appeal date?
It's my understanding in talking to bond counsel that the court order does require us to provide for the maintenance and assessment of. This lake level and to maintain that lake level through the project. As to the computation of costs. That is what is before this board currently to pass, how it's computed.
So we are responsible for the six hundred K. And we need to vote yes or we will be.
That is my understanding is that we would be in violation of our ordinance or the court order, I apologize. In terms of paying for this and. Fixing it, but how that's computed is less clear.
So just to elaborate. Yeah, elaborate on that question because that that's kind of the same question I have. The we are before us, our option is the computation of costs, not whether or not we can move, we have to move forward or not, we have to move forward. The option is whether or not we agree with the computation of costs of the six hundred and forty thousand dollars to the county.
Thank you, Chair, for that clarification. And that is what I'm saying is less clear as to how it is specifically computed. I did reach out today to counsel for the drain commissioner and seek additional information as to how that's computed. I was advised that historically it is between ten and fifteen percent. Each county does it differently. As to whether the county actually pays in as the governmental unit. And there is a case law apparently that speaks to the political subdivision paying in, but I believe it's county by county. So. It is not my understanding that this board must approve the computation of costs before you, but it is not without risk.
And you mentioned without risk and I'm going to warn this board. Even when you win, you can lose and even when you lose, you can win. What we may be able to save for fighting whether or not it was appropriately notified of our our appeal deadline. Will probably or more than likely be eaten up and 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 legal. Just just so that we all all are aware. I don't like the position that that we're in. And when I was talking about, you know, the disenfranchised communities everywhere in the county, whether it's, you know, Wakeshma Township. Paying county taxes, it's 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 part of the system. Now, most drains aren't seven point five billion dollars. Now, the argument that ten to fifteen percent of all drains are bore by county general fund is an argument that says that we should. Bear twelve percent of this costs. We don't like the position that we're in, especially with the six hundred and forty thousand dollar. Unbudgeted appropriation that we now find ourselves in. But it's a it's a philosophical question that we have to answer. And then there's also the reality of. What do we win by fighting this? You know, do we win the ability to instead of spend six hundred and forty thousand dollars to to lower the. Cost of the people on Crooked and Eagle Lake? Do we spend that instead of an attorney's and perhaps win? And then. Not only do the attorneys get the six hundred thousand dollars, but then the six hundred thousand dollars is actually is on top of that is borne by the property owners around that. That lake. So, you know, that's a that's a question that we have to ask ourselves. But again, I will say that. The Kalamazoo County did not issue building permits on a flood plain. We never did that. We haven't done that over a period of thirty years, you know. That's it is what it is. And it happened back in the fifties and sixties and seventies and eighties, but. We find ourselves in this position. So I I'm kind of torn on the computation of costs aspect of it. Now, do we have to move forward with the court order and actually establish the lake levels that have been petitioned before us? Yes, we do. We have to do that. The question relies and do we fight the computation of costs or don't we? That's that's our dilemma and that's our that's our decision really that we have any influence on before us right now. Any other questions from commissioners, Commissioner Straps?
Thank you, Chair. So I just have some additional questions about how how we found ourselves in the position without counsel. You know, having opportunity to review information. So the treasurer's office was notified. I'm wondering if someone could share with me. When were they notified? Who is the the entity that sent? That notification to the treasurer and the treasurer have. Some response as to why there was not additional communication sent.
Yes, Commissioner, the the entity that would notify the treasurer would have been the drain office and this is customary to to notify, at least in my experience. Working throughout the state, county treasures of notices similar to as this one. I'll look through, we have an affidavit of mailing. To know the date. Exactly, May fifth would be the date that they were notified by first class mail, which is in accordance with the statute. It's actually a few days. Or a couple of days in advance of what the statute provides. Twenty twenty three.
So just a follow up, the the drain commissioner was tasked with. You know, conducting the evaluation. Endeavoring through the project by the board. It was there. In the, it sounds like an expectation or standard practice to notify the treasurer, but I mean.
The statute provides you notify the the applicable political subdivisions that are being assessed. My under my experience in doing this, you know, throughout the state is, you know, when you are dealing with an assessment, it is typical to notify the treasurer's office. With respect to, you know, these are assessments, these are potential assessments that you may have to work with, putting on property owners, property taxes. So that's why we, that's why we mailed it to the treasurer. I will say that notice was also posted on the drain commissioner's website. I believe it was posted. At the drain commissioner's office. Notice was posted at the Texas Township Hall on the Texas Township website and so forth.
Well, I get I'm just a statement. I guess it's unfortunate. We can't, you know, better communicate with each other. Certainly, we all know there have been. Ongoing issues within the treasurer's office. So I recognize that's a significant. Role in this breakdown of communication, but we're in the same building together, you know, communicating with one another. Behooves the community when we can do that. The last question is about legal lake levels. Drain Commissioner, you mentioned all the other lakes have legal lake levels. The Crooked Eagle Lake, they had legal lake level set previously and this was a. A change or this is the first establishment.
First establishment.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as soon as I found out about the county's liability for the twelve percent, I immediately contacted. Administrator Catlin even before the mailing on his portionment. The amount. Just to give them a heads up because we weren't anticipating the cost of this project to be so high, honestly. I mean, like some of the residents did explain. As soon as I got the bids and we calculated your guy's cost. I called administrator Catlin and I actually went down to his office and explained to him. This was unanticipated, but here's your portionment.
But that was after our our time to appeal.
No, that was right when I when I got the amount.
Okay, thank you.
And I, in fairness to the drain commissioner, I was aware of that there was going to be a substantial cost. I wasn't exactly sure how it was and I was unaware that. There was an appeal process.
And we will be sending any other notices to corporate counsel as well from now on.
I appreciate.
And the administrator as well.
Um, Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. I think I know the answer to this question, but I want to ask it anyway. The six seventy, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars approximately, that is twelve percent. Our, we're on the hook not for twelve percent of that number, but for the entire number, that is our twelve percent, is that correct?
If we pay upfront um, without um, interest or without making payments and just pay as a one lump sum, which I recommend based on this, it'll be about four and a half points. That will be interest points that we'll be paying. I'd recommend that we pay it all upfront. Um, but yeah, it would be six hundred and seventy thousand dollars from either our ARPA or unallocated general fund.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you, guys. Um, so I guess Abby, can you read the original motion? And then I will have uh, Commissioner Vice Chair Protem Hepler make those amendments. Yeah, you gotta read these again after she reads. Just doodles are still there.
So the original motion was um, to approve two resolutions provided to the board related to the Crooked Lake and Eagle Lake levels, uh, which approved the assessment role costs and project funding.
Is there a support? There's a motion in support. Is there amendment to the motion? Commissioner Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. I guess we'll do this all over again. I move uh, board approve the following two solutions uh, but related to the Crooked Lake and Eagle Lake levels.
Sorry, uh, by corporate counsel.
Uh, apologies, uh, Commissioner or Vice Chair Protem Hepler and Commissioner Taylor, Chair Taylor. Bond counsel uh, indicated that we need to be very clear that uh, we are approving two resolutions uh, as described below, so uh, just make sure you say that.
So if we are approving two resolutions, should it be in separate motions?
You can do it in separate motions if you'd like to.
So this is not an amendment to?
It is. I wrote it word for word exactly how it should be. I moved to amend.
Okay.
If we could just read it. That would be great.
All right, I move to amend. E or H E M number two zero two three dash six three three five. Um, move the the board approve the following two resolutions relating to the Crooked Lake Eagle Lake levels. The resolution pledges full faith and credit for the Crooked Lake and Eagle Lake level special assessment district, special assessment bonds, series two zero two three and the resol number two, the resolution to approve the uh, computation of the project costs and the special assessment role for the lake level project Crooked and Eagle Lakes.
There's a motion for amendment and support. We are now voting on the amendment and then we vote on the motion. Um, any discussion on the amendment? Clerk Cox, will you please take role on the amendment?
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay, we are now on to the original emotion. Um, any discussion? Clerk Cox, would you please take role?
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
No.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
No.
Commissioner Vice Chair Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes. Um, we are now. Yes, uh, Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion that we pay this in a lump sum now and that way to avoid problems?
I think that would be a good motion of. Let's go to Kevin before we get ourselves in trouble.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's already on non-consent, so the board can discuss how they'd like to pay for it on that agenda item on non-consent.
Okay, cool. I, now we are up to. So do we still go through the assessment roles cost of all the MMNN and corporate counsel?
Chair, you'll pick up at NN, which is a separate different item that's approving and reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Um, can somebody make motion of? The chair will um, entertain a motion to reappoint Sharon Spears, Patricia Gunther and Eric Crowe to the ISK Board of Kalamazoo.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying, all right, actually, we have to have a roll call, don't we? Yes, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Nine yes.
The chair will entertain a motion to reappoint Cody Dunton to the Public Housing Commission.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, and I think since it's only one person, we can do by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those oppose, motion carries. Now we are on non-consent new business, um, and we have the, um, let's start out with the Gessler, Commissioner Gessler, you have the one from the administrator?
I do, thank you. I move to amend the motion for item twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three forty-seven under Board of Commissioners on our previously consent agenda to read as follows. Quote, request for approval of amendment number one to the Administrator Controllers Employment Agreement as presented and to extend the term continuing until June nineteenth twenty twenty-six.
There's an emotion for amendment and support by Commissioner Hepler. That's an amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. That takes us to our original motion. Um, Commissioner Wheeler, do you want to? I keep on pulling you because you're so quick at getting that. The original uh, motion as amended for the um, Administrator Controllers Contract.
Chair Taylor. She's not going to have the amended motion. Uh, Commissioner Gessler read the amended motion. Um, she might have the original, you won.
Okay, yeah.
So are we good?
We've read it as amended. Uh, technically, we should have the main motion on the floor before we amend it, so.
Okay.
Rescind your motion.
Yeah, can you rescind your motion? I want you to rescind your motion, then Commissioner Wheeler's going to make the original motion, and then you're going to have to amend it, and we're going to vote on your amendment, then we're going to vote on the original motion.
But I get to initiate a rescinding here, huh?
No, you you don't have to read, you just have to say I rescind my.
I I rescind my amended motion.
And we rescinded the support. Commissioner Wheeler, will you read the original motion, please?
I make a motion to approve amendment number one to the Administrator Controllers Employment Agreement.
This is support. Um, is there amendment, Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there is. I move to amend the motion for item twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three forty-seven under Board of Commissioners section on the consent agenda to read as follows. Quote, request for approval of amendment number one to the Administrator Controllers Employment Agreement as presented and to extend the term continuing until June nineteen twenty twenty-six.
There's a amended motion and support. Um, while we're voting on the amendment to the motion, all signify by saying aye. Those oppose? Now we're on to the original motion. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Nine yes.
All right, we got there, just took a couple of minutes longer, apologize. Um, next, uh, we got item PP, request for approval of a budget transfer to pay the county's portion of the Crooked and Eagle Lake Special Assessment. Now it's your, I'm Commissioner Hepler.
All right, um, this is twenty-three dash six-three six-six. Request for approval of the budget transfer to prepay the county's portion of the Crooked Lake Eagle Lake level special assessment. Do I need to read the amount or?
No.
There is a motion and support, and this motion is that we, instead of going through the option of paying it over ten year period of time, we'd pay it once. Um, there's a, we're estimating about a three point five percent interest rate plus a one point minute, one point administrative fee. So it'd be about four and a half points. Um, I think we're not getting four and a half points in our money, I'll just be honest with you right now, even with 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 a lot of people's help. Um, but we're, I think that we're we're better off paying it all upfront. Especially with what's going on at the federal level, um, with um, some of the negotiations with potential clawbacks of ARPA money. I would recommend and I I I probably leaned to my administrator as well, I think we're in agreement on this. Um, recommend using the ARPA dollars um, for this fund before we start losing it to federal clawbacks. But um, I'm Commissioner Strebs.
Uh, thank you, Chair, so I just wanted to elevate that particular point. Is uh, the motion before us, we're making an agreement to prepay, but not yet agreeing to how? Is that correct? So we're going to have, Minister, will we have future discussion or would you like to see us move forward today with the discussion around allocating the ARPA funds for this payment?
Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Yes, uh, so Chair Commissioner Strebs, absolutely, the uh, board should uh, direct staff on how to proceed. Uh, staff recommends paying out of ARPA funds. Uh, there are obviously a couple of options. One, we do prepay uh, in full, we could prepay uh, over time, which would be ten years, you pay over time. Uh, there, we are subject to the interest rate plus one percent. Right now, bond, uh, bond agent believes the interest rate would be around three and a half percent, so we'd be paying four and a half percent over the four, over the ten year term. Roughly, rough calculations is about fourteen thousand on top of the sixty-three six that we pay. There are some benefits and disadvantages to that, obviously, uh, so that's why uh, we're recommending uh, paying in full over uh, or uh, as soon as possible. Uh, we need to make that determination, I believe. We originally had until uh, June twenty-third, but I believe the date got pushed out to uh, July fifth or something like that, I believe. Regardless, we need to make that determination today because we wouldn't meet, I don't think, in time before that determination needed to be made.
Yeah, and the 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 source, you could just, I love amended motions, but we can amend the motion to dictate the source. Um, but yeah, my recommendation would, along with Kevin's, um, Administrator Catlin's would be to use ARPA simply because that wouldn't have been my recommendation two months ago, I would have said use it from the uh, um, unrestricted unallocated reserves, but um, I would pushing that just based on some of the things that are going on in Washington DC, I have a strong feeling, a strong fear that unused ARPA dollars are going to be clawed back, so. Commissioner Strebs.
So Chair, will you entertain a a motion to amend uh, the resolution that the prepayment uh, be funded with ARPA dollars?
I'd be ecstatic if one was made.
I'll make that motion.
All right, there's an emotion and uh, an amended and support. We are voting on the amendment to the motion, all signify by saying aye. Those oppose, we are now to the original motion as amended to pay the full six. I'm going to get the number at six. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from ARPA and direct staff to uh, pay that in one one time from ARPA. Um, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hepler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Right, motion passes. We are now. That's right. Screw up again. We are now in public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Uh, please give us your name and address, and you have up to four minutes.
Sorry, uh, my name's Gary Steinbach, uh, one eighty-four West Crooked Lake Drive. I just got a couple of comments about comments that were made here this evening from the chair, mainly the chair uh, about million dollar houses and subsidizing million dollar houses, and correct me if I'm wrong. Don't those million dollar houses pay county taxes also? Am I wrong in that assessment?
It's not the opportunity for boards to get back and forth with.
Okay.
Citizens, but.
I just want to make sure I'm not in error. We do pay county taxes. And million dollar assessments is a lot of money, no matter which way you look at it, and also we pay for for a lot of stuff that we don't agree with through the county. But as a community, we should all be pulling together in this. Not dividing us into a lower, higher income. I don't have a million dollar house on Crooked Lake. Just to be clear. I don't consider myself rich by any stretch. I kind of got lucky with where we're at. My wife and I both have worked hard to get where we're at. So I take offense with your assessment of people that are getting overrun by this assessment from the county standpoint. And I don't think it's a fair assessment. Because like I say, we pay taxes, we pay a lot of taxes. If you're looking at those communities on Eagle and Crooked, you're getting a lot of tax base from that, those two lakes, no question. And those communities, I can't speak for those communities, but speaking for myself, I pay those taxes and you guys spend money that I don't agree with the way you're spending the money. But I still pay my taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members wishing to address the board?
Hi, there, my name is Jonathan Hallberg. I am the Deputy Director of Economic Development for the City of Portage. And I'm joined tonight by Willa D. Toronto. She's our Housing Resources Specialist, and we are here to thank you very much for your support through the Homes For All Grant, uh, which you just approved part as part of the consent agenda for the Portage Road Attainable Housing Project, which will create sixty workforce housing or attainable housing for working class folks who uh, right now we have a countywide shortage for. This is for down payment assistance for the lesser of fifteen thousand dollars, seventy-five percent of the overall down payment. So the buyer will still have skin in the game, or fifteen percent of the total home purchase price, and it's really going to go a long way to making a lot of people's dreams come true. So uh, thank you very much. We really appreciate your continued support and partnership as we all try to lift and create more housing in Kalamazoo County. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Kane, and I'm the founder and Director of Kalamazoo Housing Advocates. We are a brand-new nonprofit here in Kalamazoo County, and I have my board here and my husband with me in support to take this opportunity to thank you and tell you how grateful we are for this opportunity to launch our programs that are going to, we are so positive in thinking that we are going to cause some big change here in the community for the unhoused, helping people stay in their housing and support them along the way. So I just want to tell you how grateful we are for your support.
Good evening. I'm Beth McCann. I'm the Executive Director of Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing. I'd like to thank you all for the Supportive Services Grant tonight for down payment assistance. In 2022, 107 new homeowners were made by coming through KNHS's Home Buyer Education and Coaching Program. And of those, 58% of them received some form of down payment assistance. And the average amount was $8,400. Down payment assistance is often what helps close the gap for someone to buy a home that's an 80% or under AMI. So it truly is the piece, the missing piece of the puzzle sometimes for someone to reach their goal of owning a home and achieving the American dream of homeowner syrup and just changing their life. So thank you so much. We, we will be good stewards of that money, and I will thank you in advance for all of the homeowners that are going to be just delighted with this help. So thank you.
I'm Rodder Craft, 43 North Crooked Lake Drive. I would like to thank the board for your actions this evening. It is a large amount of money you've agreed to spend here, and we appreciate that a lot. And through the several years now that we've been going through this, we owe a lot to the local government bodies. Texas Township stepped up. The Drain Commissioner stepped up, the Road Commission stepped up and helped, you know, keep access to people's homes on the lakes during the flooding crisis. And more, some people were affected much more than others. But a task force was created. We, we did not know where we were going to go or how we could have solved the problem. But the township worked and they had their engineering company that they, they have worked with us. And with some help from the DNR and Eagle and some obstruction, we, all these government bodies helped us work together to find a solution that you voted on this evening. And for Commissioner Mazur, this is deja vu all over again. She listened, meeting after meeting after meeting with people telling the stories about houses they had to abandon on Eagle Lake. And people fighting water rushing in to like micro space and to people's basements. And so, you know, it's nice that we can have some closure here and look forward to not having to repeat this sort of issue again, where various people who have lower-lying properties like mine had to spend quite a bit of money out of pocket just to save themselves from damage to the home completely. But thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Deborah Duncan again, 1454 North Eagle Lake Drive. I'd also like to thank the board for passing the resolution. This has been a complicated puzzle, crossing over five years with a lot of heartache. People actually lost their homes, but we're hoping that this is the last piece of the puzzle to save the lakes. Even though the people on the lakes are paying for this, there are people in the county and even outside the county that use Eagle Lake. When I left tonight at 6:15, there were over two dozen people using the public access. So this is a resource that is available to everyone in the county. Hopefully, by having this long-term solution in place, it'll make the overall value of the homes on our lakes go up because we no longer have to face this flooding problem. Hopefully, over the next 10, 15 years, the county will recoup in more taxes for more value in our houses, the money that you've agreed to put forward. Again, I thank all of you. We can all sleep easier now. And Wendy, thank you so much over all the years for your help.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt O'Connor, I own 266 East Michigan Avenue. Just really want to say thank you for the grant that you approved for our housing project tonight. Lighted building right downtown Kalamazoo that will be adding 13 multi-units to, as well as retail on the main floor. Just really want to appreciate all of Mary's help and leadership through, through this process. It's been very smooth and we're excited to start construction. So, thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Janine Butler-Saitzma, 715 Westbury Lane, Kalamazoo. And I am here to express my sincere appreciation for you all for granting the YWCA Wish Program funding so that we could stabilize housing for our clients and so that we could pay our well-deserved caseworkers the salary that they, they deserve in, in working with very, very, very difficult situations. So, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you. Also, here is the interim CEO of the YWCA, Lisa Rodriguez.
Thank you, Janine. Hello and good evening. I also would like to thank you all greatly for the consideration you offer to us to support our housing stability project. Among the myriad of programs we offer, we, we recognize that housing is the most critical shortage that our clients face. Whether they're coming to us through the Wish Program, which is a home visitation outreach program, or through the, the shelter programs that we provide. Housing stability is what is most needed, and thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Reed. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Community Action Agency of South Central Michigan, and I just wanted to thank the Commissioners tonight for your approval of our Rental and Utility Assistance Program. With this program, we'll be able to help around 100 Kalamazoo low-income residents with their heat and housing bills, whether that's rent assistance, first month's rent, security deposit, or helping with heat and electric bills. So I want to thank you for that. Also, your prior approval for our Senior Minor Home Repair Program, we're very thankful for that. So thank you.
Seen no other. Are there any hands raised, Administrator? No hands raised at this time, Chair. Thank you. Okay, this reports of officers, bodies, but I'll go first and I'll be quick. We are expecting our audit comments to be finished and sometime finalized sometime this week. I envision a large portion of our next meeting being talking about those comments, talking about those results, talking about responses, and how we can put Kalamazoo County on a good fiscal path. We talked about bonding today. These are the types of things that will, these comments are the types of things that could affect our bond rating and could affect our interest rate for projects that we bond in the future or anything that we decide to build in the future. So I, this, when I first took office in January, I, one of the things I told each and every single one of you was that I was going to take audit comments extremely seriously and that we needed as a board to take audit comments extremely seriously. So as these come out and we look at these, we're going to probably take, just as I want us to take just as much focus and time and energy and effort that we spend on, on the arena project on this. This is going to be a huge undertaking for the County Board of Commissioners if we're going to really in-depth look at these audit comments and how we can resolve these inefficiencies, if there are any, which I anticipate there will be. But just be prepared for the next meeting. Vice Chair. Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, many of us that are on the fire and police have been out working very hard. Summer is approached and it's here now, be here tomorrow officially. And if you see these folks out and about, please take a moment to thank them for their hard work. And especially during this time of year, thank our military folks when you see them. Or the other folks that are out there are medical folks that are out every day, trying to keep us all safe and healthy. We need to keep in mind all those folks that help us here at the county, all of our, some 900 employees that worked diligently every day or most every day to take care of our citizens and our, our community to make it the great place to live, work, and play. If you see them out, please take a moment to tell them thanks for what they're doing. It's, it's, it gets tough this time of year. There's a lot of folks wanting to get out and play. They're still working. So keep them in mind and in your prayers as they defend our country and the rights that we have to enjoy the, the kind of life that we really have, a great life here in the United States of America and Michigan and Kalamazoo County. Thank you.
Administrator Catlin.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Commissioners, audience. So this evening, I just have a few, a few updates. The first one for Commissioners that have not turned in their conflict of interest forms for the AAA program. I know we've included those. For those Commissioners, just please return to Dina ASAP. I want to share a quick update that I shared via email from US Senator Stabenow's office. And I know that also US Senator Peters' office shared or included this project and many others in their progressionally-directed spending. But it's for a request for the US 131 Spur Connector Project to divert truck traffic out of downtown. So Southwest Michigan First and other community partners have been leading that effort. And as you see, they are kind of tackling this from all angles. So that's included in some proposals from both of our US Senators, which is exciting. And then we also hit the state too. So Senator McCann's office is requesting additional funding of $7 million. So it's a pretty expensive project, but if we were to garner some funding through that, we might not have to do anything on the county side. So we have our wonderful economic development partners working on that, including our state senator. So we'll keep you all updated on that. I know that Director Grober is watching that pretty closely. We just sent a press release from the Kalamazoo County Parks Recreation, who is advancing steps towards development of a master plan for the, for Kalamazoo County's newest park, the Arthur E. and Mildred H. Willem Preserve. So this park features 200, or features 212 acres with spectacular natural features in Texas Township. It seems like, I guess they're a topic tonight, aren't they? It's good, though. It's good. At the second public workshop scheduled June 22nd from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the Expo Center in the main expo room, the draft master plan will be available for review and comments. So we hope to identify essential issues, define priorities, establish goals and objectives, and adopt a comprehensive master plan for the future of the preserve. The session is very informal, so please feel free to stop by to share some comments. And then lastly, on the, the drain issue tonight, you know, I'm glad that we were able to allocate funding for that. So just to clarify, so I was notified of the amount, and that's why this agenda item in terms of directing funding and, and the source of that funding tonight made it to the agenda this evening. However, there was a lapse in communication, and I recognize that between the Treasurer's Office and really sort of get benefited out. Typically, if the Treasurer does receive some notification of some sort, it's just assumed that administration or corporate counsel also receives the same, the same letter. So we've since cleared that up in terms of communication with the Treasurer's Office and a lot of the other offices and departments in the county, so that if they receive a letter, they immediately send it to Administration and Corp Counsel for review. So hopefully in the future, that, that doesn't happen again where we kind of waive our rights in a sense from not responding to it. So we're hopeful that won't happen again. And thank you for a great meeting. Happy to answer any questions for anything that I have not covered.
Questions for Administrator? And everybody knows that if you have a question for him, you can just text him and he'll get back to you in about three minutes anyways. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner DeLu. We never start over there.
First time ever. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Gissler.
You know, I'm not going to say that. Two things. One, I left on everybody's desk before this last meeting started. An announcement from the Conservation District. They've already conducted one of their three scheduled scrap tire recycling events. They do request that you call their office to make a reservation if you want to attend the two remaining. They had to turn people away on the one last week. They, you know, got where it was going to be in the hours and didn't make a reservation, and they weren't turned away until after the whole thing was done and the scrap tires were all basically in excess. So please take that to heart. And just a quick promotion for the Kalamazoo County Youth Fair. That's going to be between August 8th and August 12th. And hopefully we'll have kind of this kind of weather. And I think last year, we, on Saturday, which was the big day, it rained like the dickens. It was cold. It was just, you know, so mark that on your calendar too. I'll be sure to remind you in future meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Mazur.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and, and spoke in favor and opposing the Crooked Lake and Eagle Lake issue. It's been a long journey, and I'm glad to see, it's been a difficult one. So I'm really glad to see that this is coming to a solution. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Just congratulations to the best authority in the entire universe. Thank you all for your vote, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you. So congratulations to Administrator Catlin on the extension of your contract. You're doing stellar work, and we're very pleased to have you. All of the community that came out, I, you know, I've heard the, the comments previously over the lake. And I know it's been a really hard journey, so I'm glad to see that coming to, to some resolution. I wish you all the best in that going forward. And so our community continues to navigate through the summer. Just remember to take care of each other, love each other, walk away from violence, walk towards love and understanding and communication. Kalamazoo is the community that we make together, and just don't ever forget that. Thank you.
Commissioner Wheeler.
I just wanted to remind everybody, our next meeting is on a Wednesday. Mark your calendars. Do you like that? Because I know I would forget. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.